...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
De Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dan Strylan.
Yes.
Brainer Horst is absent.
Okay, before we start the festivities, Denny, where are you? Way back to the point, so I just want to, I would just want to say thanks to Denny Byers, who's retiring. This is the last city council meeting he's going to be attending. He served the city of Pella very well as our public works director for at least eighteen years, has a whole lot of knowledge about the infrastructure around this community. So I'm gonna miss him greatly, but he's telling me that he's gonna spend most of his time on the Mississippi River fishing, so I'll be looking forward to that. Just want to make sure and say thanks, Denny, for your wonderful service and your charity and your time. So we will move on. The city council has adopted the post-sability as elected official group, plus the promiscuity through extending respect to others, listening to understand disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively in speaking up to their essence of ability. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast from Pella TV, so anyone who wishes to speak to council, please approach the podium over here and make sure the microphone is near your voice, so that the people that are watching can see and hear what period of comments. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda? Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Denny, please call the board.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Strylan.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time, we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding agenda names, please put forward the microphones, state your name and address, try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Dan Zylstra, thirteen forty Hazel Street, esteemed members of the city council, I'm here on behalf of Pella Christian as an institution to show our full support for the proposed rec center and agenda day. Pella Christian benefits by having additional gym space available close by for our fall, winter, and spring sports, our younger athletes who play in town prep leagues would also have more gym space available to develop their skills. As most of you know, gym space is hard to come by in this town, so it'd be great for that. With the rec center built, Pella Christian students desiring to be on a swim team could co-op with Pella community right here in town rather than drive to Oscusa or Newton. And the rec center would also benefit our staff recruitment and retention. High-quality staff are not just looking for a place to work, but they're looking for a lifestyle with amenities like the rec center for their families. Long-term, Pella Christian will benefit from increased development in the east side of town. This would include more housing, improved transportation infrastructure near the schools, and it will benefit local businesses. In general, what's good for Pella is good for Pella Christian, so we stand by as an institution in support of this. Generous donors who believe in the mission of Pella Christian and also believe in the benefits of the rec center have agreed to step forward to fund an operational sharing agreement between Pella Christian and the city for fifty thousand dollars a year for five years, which guarantees gym space for Pella Christian use at a reduced rate. Rarely does a town like Pella have the opportunity for a generational investment, one that will benefit our grandkids and even their children. And rarely have ever been yielded such a large amount of private funding. So, city council members, I thank you for the good work that you're doing, looking out for the best long-term interest of the city of Pella.
Hey, Doi, can we make the light more mobile so it can go a little up and down? I felt bad for his back. So the people can adjust it height-wise. Just know it's pretty sensitive anyway, so if you don't have one, it's all probably gonna get access to it. So a few, so. Yeah, I gotta dig it. Sort, just spread it out. Okay. Sorry, like I said, I felt kind of bad. Anyone else?
Must be the schools are up first.
Greg Ebling, five-ten Limburg Lawn, here in Pella. Dan is gonna sound a lot smarter than me, but I basically have four points that I'd like to share with the city council and super appreciate you giving people this time. You know, I'm the superintendent of Pella Community Schools, and last night, our school board approved an agreement that's on the council agenda tonight to have an agreement with the city for pool space, which would be co-opt with Pella and Pella Christian in order to have a swim team. Currently, our students are going to Newton and to Oscusa respectively between Pella and Pella Community, and so we're driving kids there. We have a really large youth swim program in the community, but we aren't available to provide anything in our community or high school because our current pool doesn't accommodate that. And so my four points are really this. Number one, our corporations are asking for this, and I truly believe that if our corporations are asking for it, we need to be responsive. We've tried to do that in different things through the years. Our Career Academy, which is used by both Pella and Pella Christian schools, have been something that our corporations desired. We made that happen locally through the school system. I want you to imagine our community without one of our larger corporations in it. We all dance around that a little bit and think about whether, geez, I think our corporations are here to stay forever, but we've seen communities that has not happened. And not that there's a plan for that, but we need to be responsive to our local corporations and just think about what their needs are. And give more people a reason to come to Pella. This time of year, it's easy to come to Pella because the tulips are in full bloom. It'll be great Easter because of tulips being early, might not be as great of tulip time because of tulips. But in the winter, there's lots of activities that can go on in the gyms, the pool, give people a reason to come to our community, and that certainly just shows off that the Pella community, even during those winter months when we don't probably have quite as many tourists. And then, the fourth point is just invest local. You know, this is an investment local. We'll have a lot of local people that will work on this project. It is a way to generate revenue for lots of different programs and things. If you think about people coming to town, the amount of businesses that will come in to our local restaurants and shops downtown will be immense, and we want to see that happen. So I guess, you know, it's a big investment, but we've got a lot of people getting behind this, and it would be, I think, a real black eye for Pella if we didn't move this thing forward. So I'd really encourage you to vote to move this project forward tonight.
Eric Van Clay, thirteen sixty-one Northwest Drive. Not only are the schools speaking first, but also those who have a lot of hair, so I'm trying to go along here just to update. But two things that I want to mention, I want to start with an update and sincerely thank each of our city council members for their support for our pickleball project. And I think that was a model of when we look at things maybe a little bit differently or creatively than we have in the past, it can really serve everybody well. And like I said, I cannot thank the city council, each and every one of you members, for supporting that project. And the update is that we have anywhere from five-year-olds to eighty-five-year-olds using that. It is bringing people together, it is bringing people from our corporations and employees, and everybody keeps asking, so what do we owe you for this? Nothing. And then I say, actually, you do, you owe us goodwill. We are just happy to be community partners with that project, and that was a joint project between the city council and Central College, putting our dollars forward to be able to make that happen. We view the rec center as an extension of that. Our full intentions at Central College was, were we to move forward with the rec center and the pool, we would be adding both genders of swim teams at Central College and supporting with our operating dollars to help fund that. We want to be a partner in the community, we want to bring new students and families, and not only does it serve those students and families that come to Central College, those same families are the ones that are spending their dollars in Central College more broadly and in the greater Pella community. And this project has, Central College is full support on that. We think it can be one more example of things that bring this community together in so many ways and make this community special. So we thank you for the consideration of this.
I am Tracy McCullough. I live at twelve ninety-five Emerald Drive in Ottley. My kids are open enrolled into Pella schools, at the high school and at the intermediate school. I am a stay-at-home parent. My kids had the luxury of going into the community center through the wintertime, which was a wonderful escape for myself. Obviously, that's no longer in use for that stay-at-home community or even the homeschool community. We also used the indoor playground at PCV, that's no longer, what was that, I don't remember what it was called, but that was another escape for us, for stay-at-home moms who needed an escape to talk with other stay-at-home moms and let our kids burn up energy in the wintertime. Since those two places are no longer available, I have no idea what they're doing besides going to Storytime at the library, which is great as well. So, a community center with, or a rec center with a gym space to let the kids roll with other friends, for homeschool community to run a gym class, to run a basketball game during the day would be wonderful, okay? I'm also a youth sports coach locally. I coach soccer. My kids participate in Pella Hoops Club. We go, we're driving from Ottley, just north of the lake, the Mylawn Bridge in town. We have late practices, we're getting home nine-thirty, ten o'clock on those nights. I don't love it, but that's my option right now. More gym space would make it so my kids would get a little bit more rest, and we all need a good rest. Now, I have young kids, but I also, in a previous life, before I had kids, I worked with senior saints, people with chronic disease, arthritis, pain, stroke survivors, people with Parkinson's MS. We talk about having a therapy pool. That is so integral to keeping this, the quality of life for those citizens who struggle every day with mobility, to keep them strong so they can live in their houses independently, which is so important as we age. I'm getting there, some of the aches and pains are starting, make you know somebody who's been affected by that. The walking track is also very integral, getting some of the laps going. My mother-in-law has neuromuscular disease, and it's important for her to get her steps every day. She cannot tolerate weather, she cannot tolerate wind. A climate-controlled facility would be fabulous for her, so she can get in with other people with chronic disease or just want to stay healthy. Then there's the people that you're gonna see at five AM cranking out weights, cranking out the stuff. Those people want some options too. There are options, but a public thing where the whole family can join in, hey, we're gonna go as a family, you guys go swim in the pool, I'm gonna run on the treadmill, and oh, there's a pickup game for my husband to play. It's like a win-win. It's great quality family time, all in one space, we can all go to and from. I can't speak enough about that. Please, please, let this go through. Thank you.
Rachel Tiskinix, thirty twenty Blue Bell Lane. I'm actually here on behalf of Michelle Heath, a good friend of mine that wasn't able to attend tonight, but she really wanted me to make a plea for the special needs. So I did used to drive for the Pella schools for seven years, and I drove the special needs bus. So I actually was responsible for transporting some of the students to the pool for that time for their PE. And Michelle's request, and I can concur with this, is just to have a place where it can be a space where the special needs can come, and if they have a hard time with restrooms, if they have a difficulty emotionally or socially going into some inclusive spaces, the rec center would be able to provide a solution for that. So thank you for including everyone, so that Pella is seen as a town that is looking to take care of everyone. Thank you.
I live at eleven oh-five Edgewater Drive. I'm the secretary for Southeast Aquatics. We are the USA sanctioned swim club here in town. We are a nonprofit organization, so pretty much all of our money that comes in from our families is going towards our coaching fees and our pool rental fees. We rent the pool three to four days a week for about four hours, four and a half hours at a time, so we are at the pool a lot. And because we're nonprofit, we try to keep our amounts low to families, but we are not able to have a big fundraiser that would be a swim meet at our pool. So if we were able to have a new pool, we would be able to have swim meets at the pool that would draw hundreds of people into town on like a Saturday and Sunday boat. They would be more likely to stay in town and shop in town as well and eat in town. So that would be all benefits to the town, and our swim team would really benefit from the pool. I had emailed all of you earlier this week with a newsletter, so you can see how active our swim team is and how committed the people are to the swim team. Thank you.
All right, I tried to go last, so Nathan Copeland, Neil Drive, Pella, Iowa. Gonna change the subject to the soccer complex. And so there is a resolution today, and I believe there'd be a motion and a request for, for a call of order, call across that. And I guess I would request, because this has been less contentious and highly board or council-supported, I would request that there's a motion to eliminate the future readings and try to close that topic and clear it off the list for everybody to have to deal with. Also, I wouldn't change the subject, but I'll come back in support of the rec center and the pool. My family's been involved with swimming for quite some time, had a lot of good success with going to Newton, but we definitely like to see the swim team grow. Great to hear that the Pella Christian is also considering joining, that it can just continue to grow that. And the swim group has offered a lot of extension of those swimmers to be able to take that on into college, and that again is an entry point, there aren't a lot of people who join swim, so it gives them a great opportunity to get scholarships from D3 and other schools. Thank you.
Sorry, Nathan, I was a sense of, I'll still let you be the last one here. Good evening, my name is Jessica Klein-Danovelo, and I am here this evening to speak in my role as the community relations and foundation manager for Pella Corporation, and yet another voice of support for the indoor recreation center. I'd like to provide a bit of context as to why Pella Corporation has been such a strong supporter of this project. Pella Corporation has grown rapidly in recent years, and I joined the organization about eighteen months ago. I'm a lifelong resident of Pella. I had no idea how much the organization had grown. That growth has been strategic. Today, Pella Corporation is a multi-billion dollar company operating in a rapidly consolidating industry. Some of you know a lot about that. This means that as a company, we either grow and be the consolidator or risk being acquired and being consolidated. This aggressive growth strategy has only accelerated in recent years to ensure that we remain an industry leader. As a result, the organization has evolved, both in size as well as complexity. So today, we employ over ten thousand team members with manufacturing in eighteen different locations in the US. Nearly three thousand of those ten thousand work here at our headquarters in Pella. Talent, of course, is what fuels that growth, and we know that the ability to attract talent from across the US and retain those talented professionals here in Pella is imperative to the long-term success of the organization. This is why Pella, especially over the last five years, has done our best to be a strong community partner, because there's a love and commitment for this community. And we've invested nearly thirty-five million dollars in the areas we've heard where there's need, in housing, childcare, restaurants, as well as in recreation. As we look to the future, we know that we must be able to retain the highly capable team members that we have and to be able to attract new talent as the company grows. The proposed rec center will be a key fixture in doing just that. In addition, of course, we know that the community investments we've made, as well as the rec center, are both key to the economic development that continues to make Pella such a vibrant, unique community. I want to thank the city staff, the council members, our mayor, and the many, many community members who've poured their time and talent into these projects already. We're really, really fortunate to have this level of commitment in the community, and we certainly don't take it for granted. Thank you.
Okay. David Corbin, twenty-four oh-five Trenton Land. First of all, I'd like to thank each one of you for your service. You probably don't hear that very often, or probably not enough. Being in a leadership position requires a lot of time and effort, and oftentimes, you're called upon to make difficult decisions. So I just want to express my gratitude and respect for your service. I've been a resident for twenty-six years, a Pella resident for twenty-six years. I'm the proud father of eight children. God has blessed me with eleven grandchildren. Seventeen of us live here in Pella, and we just love the community. And I urge each one of you to support the resolutions for the passage of the rec center and the aquatic center. I think we would all benefit from that, so would really appreciate your support in approving those resolutions. Thank you very much.
So I am gonna change the subject just a little bit. I'm Cindy Atkins from thirteen thirty Boone Street, and I'm the executive director of the Pella Opera House. I want to thank all of you for your service, and I also want to thank you and thank all of the city employees who were involved in looking over our special permit request for Opera House Outdoors. You have many, many waiting things to consider at every meeting that you are here for. We appreciate what you do for our community, for the Pella Opera House. We are so thankful this year to have on the consent agenda and hope to have again our Opera House Outdoors event on the streets of Pella on Friday, May sixteenth. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to have a chance to celebrate our wonderful community and all the tremendous things that are going on here. Bringing a stage outdoors, bringing music to the community, people can come and listen for free, or they can get inside of our fenced area and enjoy themselves. It's just wonderful to be able to bring music to the entire community. We're thankful to Pella Corporation for sponsoring as part of the centennial celebration, thankful to LDJ Manufacturing. So please vote yes for the consent agenda tonight, and then just go online and get your tickets to come to Opera House Outdoors if you want in the fenced area at www.pellaoperahouse.org.
I'll save my info, so we'll move on. But I think, can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, Denny, please call the board.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dan Strylan.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right. Cindy. So now, Mike, can you give us a financial facility plan, financial overview? Obviously, we've been discussing this. This facility plan was approved back in April of twenty-twenty-two by the city council on six to zero vote. There've been other approvals along the way when it came to architects' work and architects' fees and that. And so we are still looking at the facility plan that was introduced back then. It's the one we're still working on. And so obviously, tonight is the night of some important decisions, whether to move the plan forward or not. And so we're gonna take a fair amount of time, we're gonna go through all the details. My main interest is to make sure all the truth and facts come out. There's a whole lot of discussion around the community that doesn't have a lot of truth there, so we're gonna, we're gonna get the facts out there. Where we've been, how we got there, where we're trying to go. And hopefully, we can have a great discussion about that, and I hope at the end of it, we can move this facility plan forward. So I know there's a whole lot of you in this room that are very interested in that happening. So I'm just gonna, we're gonna start with the financial portion. We have some experts here tonight that are gonna lend some information and some make sure everybody tries to understand what we're talking about before we move into our discussion. So I'll turn it over to Mike and whoever he might call to be part of the presentation.
I guess Mr. Rare, I'd be happy to expand some. As Mayor Duarte stated, we're going to actually start off with a brief overview of the city's long-term facility plan. And for those in attendance, for those watching at home on Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the brief presentation on the site. Now, as Mayor Duarte stated, when we actually approved and initiated the city's long-term facility plan back in April of twenty-twenty-two, we actually established three goals for the plan, and I think those three goals are still relevant today as we consider these projects in order to proceed forward with them or not. First goal that we had was to improve the quality of life within our community. We also stated as a goal that we wanted to attract new citizens to our community as well, and then underlying goals, one of the things that's embedded in the community, is increase the city's tax base as well. This is particularly true anytime you start talking about some potential state funding cuts, not state funding cuts, but property tax changes as well. It's important that you continue to grow your tax base on it. So we did these goals that we identified in April two thousand twenty-two, still relevant to the administration, so these are still relevant today as we consider these projects. So let's go ahead and do some spending. Now, as far as the criteria is concerned, you're gonna hear a lot of discussion tonight about, this was actually approved by a council, and we discussed this in December twenty-twenty-four. And the criteria that you see up on the board is the criteria that we use to evaluate whether we can receive construction bids for these projects. And so just to briefly go through them on how these projects are being measured, tonight is, A, we want to take away the city's fiscal capacity on the projects, that's very important, not only from an overall timing standpoint, we want to make sure our income matches our projected expenditures as well, but we also want to make sure that the fiscal and the funding sources that the city's identified for our portion of the plan, they're viable financing sources. We have a couple individuals tonight that are gonna elaborate on those sources as well. One of the items that we have that's great in this plan is, A, through both the recreation center as well as the community center, there's been a significant portion of private funds raised for the project. One of the dilemmas that we have with the private funds is most of the private plans that we're talking about this evening will be financed over a period of five years. The construction period for both the recreation center and the community center is actually over a much shorter time period, actually over a period of two years for the rec center, so we have a timing issue. And one of the items that we identified that's important for council's consideration, we wanted to make sure we had a plan for financing those private pledges, we're gonna be talking about that this evening as it applies to the rec center with our proposed contracts all over, obviously, well. And the last point, which is certainly a significant item on this, anytime you consider major capital investments, you always want to make sure it's not gonna take the stretch of time. But you also want to make sure that you can operate the facility But you also want to make sure that you could operate the facility. At the end of the fact, the city council was a requirement that these projects had to be planned on a revenue control basis. Now, when we talk about revenue neutrals, it applies to the projects this evening, since these projects will be managed, we talked about both the Community Center and the Recreation Center by the Community Services Department. We want to make sure once these projects are operational, that they do not increase the net subsidy to the Community Services Department. So as it applies to the management criteria this evening, the Community Services Department has a little bit over about a two-million-dollar subsidy. What I mean by subsidy is best to not have expenditures currently that are in excess of revenue generated by the department. It's commonly the business or the debt that has committed through property taxes. As we discuss the Recreation Center tonight, we want to make sure that that subsidy does not increase as we go to the RECT Center. So Mr. Scott Karen and Alan King talks about the feasibility study, covers the feasibility study. It's very important to understand that the feasibility study is based on the projection of additional revenues and additional expenditures that are currently not being budgeted for. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy, and alluded about the overall plan that we have. When we look at both the Community Center and the Pella Recreation Center, as well as the associated infrastructure for the plan, we're just under a fifteen-point-five-million-dollar proposed plan that we have. And as you can see up here, revenues do match the main expenditures, and we're going to dive into the greater details in close to the Recreation Center this evening. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the Recreation Center, and as Michael Maloney and the A.D. Vincent, the city's financial advisor, will be going to provide greater detail about the city's financing sources. But as far as the Recreation Center is considered this evening, it's currently a thirty-five-point-two-million-dollar project that we're discussing this evening. And as you can see from our projects up here, we have a city contribution of seventeen-million dollars over, which is slightly less than half the proposed project, and that goes to the enthusiasm for this project and the underwriting funds that are raised to the community aid from the project as well. Now, we do have an itemized detail of the tentative budget for the Recreation Center as well. And in summary, you know, Michael is going to be covering these key points is, from the fiscal capacity standpoint, we have a complete closest allowance plan tonight, which means that the project revenues match the project expenditures. We also have a proposal to finance the outstanding pledges for the project due to over sixteen-million dollars for our contract or twenty-eight-year agreement with Pella Rec this evening. And finally, Mr. Scott Karen tonight, Alan King, is going to be covering the feasibility study that was recently adopted for the Pella Rec Center. And through that, once again, we're talking about additional revenues and additional expenditures for the Recreation Center. We believe that we do have a projected revenue control operations for the Recreation Center through the year twenty-four twenty-four as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, when we talk about the Recreation Center this evening, this is the full evidence, one of the options that council's going to be considering this evening, that in general speaking, we're proposing a project with sports and museums competition as well. What's commonly referred to as a recreational floor that we have up here as well, a walking track, workout facilities, gaming rooms, as well as station facilities and other amenities as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As far as the location for the plan, this is the facility portion of the project. The city is also proposing to use part of the plan, as we're proposing to extend University Street from here to where you have it, on this. And in addition, we'll be extending based on Drive, current permanent point to up to the University Street. So if you're travel difficult, Sports Park, you should have two ends and outs, a few different exit points from the public sports park that you have. The Recreation Center itself is planted in the northwest corner of the public sports park. It's also important to note that we are planning a sidewalk and a trail extension, mainly a trail extension on University Street on the south side of University Street as well as part of this project. But overall, when we look at the project, if you recall, we talked about attracting additional citizens to our community, improving the quality of life, and then also potentially increasing the city's tax base. We think this project's located in a great location for the city of Pella, in very close proximity to public schools, public Christian schools, Lumberdale Manufacturing, Bailey. And if you look at the development that's occurred in our community over the recent period, we've had development on the west side of town, on the north side of town, we feel that a project like this has the potential to accelerate development on a recent portion of our community as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead and please. Now, as far as that facility plan, these projects that are associated with the facility plan proportion, so that would be the University Street extension, based on Drive extension as well, those will be get out of council proceeds with Recreation Center in the spring of next year as well. But overall, we're looking at estimated to cost seven-point-seven million dollars. And this is the various funding sources that we have up here, what we propose, and Michael's going to be talking about this this evening, proposed general obligation bond, six-point-seven million dollars. We've also secured a million-dollar grant from the Federal Government for this portion of the project as well. Can I be remiss if I didn't say that as part of the infrastructure project, we also have some significant infrastructure that's going to be a benefit outside of the recreational areas for our community, proposing to extend the building to what remains to the eastern side of our community that can increase our flows for our industrial customers on that side of town as well. So there's a lot of benefits outside of this project from the recreational standpoint. In addition, I'd like to mention that the University Street extension project has been shown in the city's comprehensive plans since two thousand and seven as well. So this has been a long-term project in Pella that's coming, that will be being considered as a spring. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Want to talk briefly on the Community Center, and if you're here in attendance and interested in the project, we have this potentially scheduled for the main six agenda. I will say this, due to factor of bias estimates, they are increased slightly on a very similar to the Pella Recreation Center. This evening, this project has a total of, I think, costs of seven-point-six million dollars, and you can see the city's contribution was being proposed, as well as a very similar contract that we're going to be talking about this evening, Pella Rec. We're also proposing a very similar contract with the friends of the Community Center as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, with that, Mr. Mayor, unless there's questions for me on the overall plan, then Mike will go ahead and try to pull over, just remind Michael Maloney and the A.D. Vincent.
Hi, folks. Good to see everybody again. Michael Maloney from DA Gabe's, and I'm the city's financial consultant. We've talked about some of the top materials here in the past. I think the biggest difference today is the refinement in terms of the numbers from some of the projections to a little bit more tangible information in terms of not just the funding sources, but also the actual project costs. So some of this may be familiar to folks, but want to take a big-picture approach here. We're going to start from the top. Council members, feel free to interrupt at any time, have to answer questions as we go, or at the end, whatever works for you, folks. Mandy, the first slide. Thank you, already on it. So the long-term capital planning, we talked to a lot of communities about these types of projects, and I always reference the big three. It's authority, capacity, and repayment. And just very simply here, I'm not going to read off of every slide, but the key is how do we have authority to proceed as a city to move forward on a project? Do we have the capacity to be able to do the types of financing activities that we want to do? And then the last one, the most important one, is how do we pay for that? And that's that combination of revenue sources and financing sources that Mike alluded to. We're going to cover each of these as we go through the rest of the slides today. Next shot, Mandy. This information here about the funding sources, I've talked to the city and other communities in the past about what options are available for communities, working with city staff. We've been pretty consistent about the two identified sources of planned repayment for the financing elements on the city side. The first would be leveraging the local option sales tax revenue stream that the city had reauthorized a few years ago, and then the second piece would be the debt service levy component of the city's overall property tax rate. That would be used to fund the infrastructure improvement that Mike alluded to for University and Baseline. So we'll be focused on those bolded items, but I always like to show the menu for folks to just be clear what those options are, or pick them from a menu, it's not a buffet. Let's go to the next slide. There is a lot of white space on this chart as we talk about the city's debt capacity. And debt capacity is a statewide limitation under state law that says that a city can't have tax-backed debt more than five percent of its assessed valuation. Now, there's a couple elements of that. One, Mike had talked about one of the city's goals of growing the tax base over time, and what that does, it would increase your capacity, all things being equal, year over year as your tax base increases. The other part of it is that municipal debt, as well as a city would issue, typically has a portion of principal repaid every year. So that's normally on an annual basis, kind of similar how you might pay monthly on your home mortgage. What that means is the principal's going to also decrease every year. So over time, we want to illustrate the fact that debt gets paid off by a city. We've got a few historical years, and then the outstanding debt of the city that's currently outstanding, reducing over time. If you're struggling to see it, and you see a lot of white on the page, there's a reason for that, and that's that the city has an extremely low debt burden at this time. We're going to revisit this slide with the projected debt at the end, but I want to make sure this is clear in your mind before we move forward. Let's go to the next slide and just talk a little bit about the facility plan of finance. So Mike talked about some of those details, these numbers all tie together, but the three funding sources that we're going to be focused on, first, the local option sales tax revenue stream of the city, that's going to be the primary financing source for repayment of debt. The other pieces are outside contributions from fundraising and partnerships that have been outlined before, we'll have more details on as well. And then the final piece would be the debt service levy component. So to be clear, that debt service levy component, again, focused on the street and related infrastructure that Mike had mentioned, that was the third component of financing pieces, and that's anticipated for twenty-twenty-six. So big picture, just trying to narrow things down in scale, we're going to hit each of these as we move along. Let's go, Mandy. This is the same information that Mike had included. The totals are the same as what Mike had provided in his slides as we went through. Just want to make sure we're anchoring everybody that we're on the same page here, the staff's information is coordinated in what we're talking about today. Let's go to the next slide, Mandy. I'm going to focus here a little bit on the local option sales tax revenue stream. I don't think anybody's super excited to go into the state code on this, but we've got applicable sections listed up there. The thing I want to make clear is that this is a voter-approved revenue stream, and it's based on the one percent sales tax, that's part of the sales tax you pay on most transactions around the community. So one of the things that we were talking about previously was the community benefit of drawing people to Pella, whether it's tool of time or the rest of the year. The nice thing about the sales tax revenue stream is that it's not just Pella citizens and Pella taxpayers that are paying into this revenue stream. So by continuing to be a vibrant destination community, it means that dollars from outside the state help to support Pella projects. Thought that's an important thing to point out. I've talked about this revenue stream with other communities. I think that's something that this group and the staff have been very clear about, but I just wanted to reiterate that from outside, an outside perspective as well. The one key here is it's based on actual sales data. So the city doesn't have levers to pull with this revenue stream once it's enacted. This is a kind of a state-considered revenue stream based on county actual retail sales. And while Pella's a main driver of that within the county, this is not something where you've got levers to pull on a year-to-year basis. So wanted to keep that in mind as we talk through some additional information. The city is only limited on this revenue stream based on the purpose statement that voters have already approved. So we have the ability as a community to issue debt with pledges from this revenue stream for purposes that were included in that ballot referendum. So that's already in place. I want to be clear that the city's bond attorney has provided feedback to staff, making it clear that these are eligible project expenses based on that data that's there. So just wanted to line up sort of that authority consideration as we talked about it. The repayment element of this is about what this revenue stream currently looks like and what we're looking to leverage. We're going to focus on that here. For the current year, the state provides a monthly projection, we're getting through that fiscal year wrapping up in June, that's roughly one-point-eight million dollars in terms of the city and Pella's sales tax revenue share for the year. Now, want to be clear about that revenue stream, that's the Pella-city portion only. There has historically been an additional element from the county share. That is not included in this analysis, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear from that standpoint. If you just take a look at that one-point-eight million for the term, that's about thirty-six-point-one million dollars with no growth assumptions baked in for this twenty-year period. The thing I want to make sure is understood is there's been historical growth in this revenue stream. If you just think about the growth of the community and the growth in consumer spending, that just means there are more retail sales. If you're collecting one percent of all retail sales, that trend increases over time. We did a little digging, and the historical growth has been three-point-eight-four percent. That would change that thirty-six million in the projection to over fifty-one million. So we're going to show that both ways, but wanted to at least show what the thought process was behind those two elements. Let's go to the next slide. Just a little bit of data in terms of what that looks like. I'm not asking anybody to read into the super detail here, I'm going to summarize it for folks. I think the short story is that fifty-one million is shown on the left side in terms of the projected growth scenario, and the thirty-six million is shown on the flat scenario. I know we can't have a crystal ball on this, but I can tell you that neither is how it's actually going to turn out, it's not going to be zero percent every year, it's not going to be, you know, three-point-eight-four percent every year. Odds are it's somewhere in between on these, there are no guarantees. The key is showing the anticipated borrowing related to the bond proceeds necessary for the Recreation Center element of the project, and it's just over about twenty-four million dollars of debt payments over the same period of time. So on the growth scenario, that's just slightly less than fifty percent of the projected revenues. And then on the no-growth, more conservative scenario, that still leaves a cushion of over ten million dollars over that projected period. That's good for a couple reasons. One, the city's got other things they want to try to do with these sales tax dollars, either on additional financing or more likely on a pay-as-you-go basis to invest within the community. And two, when we're issuing debt based on this revenue stream, we want to have a little cushion to give comfort to investors that'll improve the credit quality and lower your interest rate as a city. So just something that we're mindful of as we analyze both the growth and no-growth scenarios. Let's go to the next slide, Mandy. I think the important part here is that there's capacity in general with both of these, kind of the conservative and the growth scenarios here. And I want to come back on the authority standpoint, that the city council has the authority on its own to move forward with this element of financing. So just a little bit of a timing consideration here, you would have a hearing to be able to authorize these, just with future meeting dates, it's a simple public hearing, two meetings. We moved forward, it's a pretty simple process to access the bond market, you prepare an offering document, similar format to what the city's done before. We require a credit rating for the sales tax revenue stream. Again, that's not revenue stream you can control, so we have a good idea that that is a strong consideration within the state of Iowa from the rating agencies, that other communities have issued similar debt in the past. If necessary, we secure credit enhancements to be able to market the bonds at a stronger credit level and lower interest costs. The whole goal of that process would be make this as broad of a potential investment package as possible, and two, lower the interest rate so more of these dollars are to go pay back the project and lessen the interest. From a timing standpoint, this can very comfortably get started without any rushing or special meetings in May, and be able to provide funding for the city as soon as early June. The idea that summer issuance and talking with staff would be to align to make sure that necessary funds are available at the time of mobilization and ordering equipment and materials for the project, so I think the city can get those prices locked in sooner than later. So just aligning that timeline in a comfortable manner, assuming that the city would proceed, we just wanted to lay that out for the council's understanding. Couple more slides, and I'll wrap up for any questions. But the other element of financing that we're talking about is related to the infrastructure. I want to give you some background in terms of the thought process there. We're relatively conservative in terms of, you know, where that annual assessed valuation growth would be, and have that at two percent annualized growth. Then we've got taxable valuation at a pretty conservative basis. Right now, it's at just about one percent in the projection. What we did for the infrastructure improvements, University and Baseline, was assuming a twenty-year amortization with level debt payments and pretty conservative interest rates. Not sure how much time you spent looking at the market, considering how much is going on Pella at tool of time, but the last two weeks has been a little bit interesting. That being said, we thought a conservative estimate was probably the fair thing to do, so just keep that in mind as we share some information with you today. We've got a limitation here in our debt capacity models that say, hey, there might be a self-imposed limitation of never using more than eighty-five percent of the state legal limit. That's a pretty standard consideration in Iowa for similar communities. The difference is the city of Pella has never been anywhere near that. If you see any of those references, it's just to be apples-to-apples with other communities. I'll show you what that leverage looks like here momentarily. The key is that even with adding the two obligations that we're talking about, the city would only be about forty-three percent of the legal limit. So in that context, still a pretty low debt burden, even when these projects are online. I think the key piece from repayment impact of this revenue stream is that we're talking about these conservative estimates- So in that context, still a pretty low debt burden, even when these projects are online. I think the key piece from repayment impact of this revenue stream is that we're talking about with these conservative estimates, about $525,000 a year of annual payments. That works out to about 69 cents per thousand, that's the mileage rate. 69 cents on the debt service levy component of the city's property tax rate instituted for fiscal '27 and beyond. That is a conservative number that is going to change based on the actual dollar amount, the final interest rates, and then whatever valuation growth or changes to the legislation that comes through this session as of next budget year. It can sometimes be valued every year. And while we've talked about this being fully paid for by the city's debt service levy component, because the nature of this infrastructure is essential, street-related improvements, water, sewer, et cetera, there are other city sources to pay for that. But we'd save that discussion for council to have with future budget meetings and have taken the most conservative view of this at this time. With all that, I think a simple chart is useful just to estimate what the potential property tax impact is. The summary on this simply shows what the impact would be both on an annual and monthly basis, based on different valuation assumptions, and that's assessed valuation. So when we calculate this, we're calculating it based on the assessment of the home. The rollback percentage, that changes year-to-year, backing out any potential homestead credit from the county. And then based on that levy impact, the 69 cents I've mentioned, what that would be based on the valuation. There's a lot of ways to think about this in terms of average home value, median home value, median sales price. I think a reasonable proxy for the city right now would be on that $300,000 of assessed valuation. We can obviously run this at different levels as necessary. But just using that simple $300,000 proxy for 69 cents, that would be roughly equal about $7.90 per month in taxes. Again, trying to use conservative assumptions in all facets here, but doing the best we can at this time to articulate that for the council's benefit. Going to wrap up here shortly after the last two slides. One more chart, just a little bit on what this debt capacity sheet would look like. I noted a couple of things earlier that I'm going to call back to here. One is historically, the city's debt burden has been very low. And even with the blue shaded bars in here, I mentioned we'd be about 43% of total debt capacity, which is relatively modest considering the size of the city. The other piece that I noted is typical municipal debt is paid down on an annual basis, a little bit of principal every year. And that's why you see the declining blocks over time. So if you were paying attention the whole way through and you're not asleep from me talking yet, you understand this chart is the reward here. Let's summarize on the last slide. So overall, and this is consistent with Mike's slides before, the total potential long-term financing is about $23.4 million. The city council has authority to proceed with its own autonomy on both financings through simple public hearings. The city has plenty of capacity to address all those current projects. And the two repayment sources are sales tax revenues and the debt service levy component of the property tax rate. I've been trying to be very conservative throughout here, noted those assumptions. A couple of things that are here. One, any growth that you have in terms of valuation or revenues from the sales tax or other sources could help reduce the impact from what we talked today. I've mentioned this council before, the potential impact of adding on this amount of debt and that it could have downward pressure on the city's credit rating. Having done a number of larger capital improvement projects over the last few years, I would tell you, while I feel obligated to mention this to council, based on the leverage we're talking about today, I think it's pretty unlikely we'd see a change in the city's credit rating for this work. That being said, even a one-notch downgrade from that standpoint would be worth only about 0.05 to 0.15% on interest rates, which is relatively modest. Yet I know, working with a couple of other Dutch communities, we all have a strong ego about our financial capacity. It would probably hurt more for that credit downgrade on the letter side than the dollar side. But still want to feel obligated to point that out. That's it for me today. I know I've had a lot of information. Hopefully, a number of it is summary for the council members and staff. But want to thank staff for supporting this together and open up to any questions folks might have or anything that I missed from staff. Thank you.
Any questions?
You might go back to the chart. If I'm reading this right, this is, orange is where we currently are on.
Yeah.
Blue is the rest center.
Yeah.
The difference between where it would be completely zeroed out debt without doing anything, orange.
Yes.
And where it would be zero debt, doing the rest center. Are these annual bars correct?
Five years.
Five years difference?
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to make clear. You said rest center debt. This includes both the infrastructure and the rest center.
Correct.
Yes. There's $36 million of infrastructure that is sitting here in the rest center.
I'm a visual person, so this is super helpful. So I think personal point is why I would like to do a big, really deep process. Guys excited about, and I didn't pay it off down to zero. Depending where I was currently ledges to where my new ledger would be. I'd be mobile stuff for five years. That's, I find that very encouraging. And that's what pretty conservative across the board expectations on where we're going from here economically. Well, fine.
That, that's correct. I think there's two factors on your timing. One, you don't have a whole lot outstanding to shape around, right? Two, your sales tax revenue stream has about 18 more years of collections left on it. And then on the infrastructure, the university and baseline, the maximum amount of time under state law you can borrow for is 20 years. So, you know, being conservative to all those elements baked in here, you could always shape it differently, but you've got a lot of capacity right now. So you're exactly right with that.
I just have a question, a couple of questions actually. Your original report and even the updated report state that the primary service area of less than 50,000 people just cannot have enough people to support a rest center. Primary service area of Pella is about 14,439 people. So what has been your experience with cities on both sides of the 50,000?
Yeah, I, I think you might be confusing me with a different insult.
Yeah, you're asking the wrong question, the wrong guy. He's the finance guy. Oh, King is the opposite. I thought his name was Scott Kiras.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a great question.
Should I give it a shot?
Yeah, give it a shot. He is doing study.
I'm going to leave that to the expert.
What's that?
I'm going to leave that one to the expert.
Okay, okay. Sorry, any other questions for finance guy? I'm just anxious to ask my question.
So I have, I have an observation and I'm not asking you to give an opinion. You're a bad guy, like the bad sugar. To me, when I look at this, the opportunity to finance this on a long-term, this sale debt on the bond that is paid back by the sales tax, makes a whole lot of sense because you showed the 3.57 increase over time. I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but inflation makes a big difference here. When we issue the bond, we are going to set the annual payments for 20 years. It's not going to change. It can only go down if we so choose with an interest rate drop. On a revenue stream, whether we have one more dollar of sales in the community of Pella is going to rise by the inflation rate, which right now is 2.7 or 8, depends what month it is. So the, our, our available payback cash will increase annually by the inflation rate at minimum. To make, so every year we make a bond payment, we are paying back current pay dollars with cheaper dollars.
I mean, that's the theory of the case for everything that I do with bond financing, right? That's what municipal municipalities do to leverage debt. It's very different for investments in the community than it is for someone wanting to do something in their personal or even business life, right? So I, I think to your point earlier, hey, that gap is something I really want to do. That's got to be worth it to you on a personal level. But the big difference between you, me, and running business is that the city of Pella has a mandate to operate in perpetuity. It's a really unique mandate for entities that exist, right? So you're always fighting that inflationary battle. Folks like me or the engineers, the help works team have always talked about those kind of things. But it's all been brought to light for us over the last five years in our personal lives, right? So that is the theory of the case. You fix your rate today, you know you're fighting inflation. But the idea is that you're going to lock in the price of that project today and enjoy the benefit over time. By debt financing in this manner, which is appropriate for municipalities with these types of projects, you're also spreading the repayment of this project in two ways. One, over the time period for people that are going to enjoy those assets, right? Not everybody in this room is going to live in Pella for the length of this period of time. But those that are, are going to be helping to pay for the amenities that they enjoy. And the second part I mentioned earlier is when you do a project that's either going to maintain, which in many communities can be an important economic thing, or improve the quality of life, which is one of the goals of the city, it means you're going to get people investing more than the community on their end or from folks outside the community to spend dollars here. And that goes directly to your point, Mr. Mayor. Whether it's inflationary purposes or growth purposes, the idea is you've got hopefully at least as many, if not more, dollars to pay for this over time.
Yeah, I think it's important to, for us to remember, this is probably a minimum of 15-year project. We're going to finance over 20 years. So, and again, the way, the way the debt repayment is set up with the sales tax revenue, that's super positive.
I do have an observation. Yeah. When you put up the sales, the property tax increase, you illustrated it with a house worth $300,000. And interestingly, that's the median value of houses in Pella. So half of the houses worth more, half are worth less. The median income in Pella is about $90,000 a year. So when you start talking about adding $100, $150 in property taxes to somebody that's making $90,000 a year, that's, that's an interesting question.
And I think we broke it down at about $7.90 per month. And again, that's kind of all, all things being equal and flat over time. I think, you know, the expectation and what we've seen historically, and one of the things that legislators are trying to address, is the assessed value of homes going up over time. So a big part of that is what that rollback percentage is. And for residential rollback, that's dropped from 60 to 150 for a number of years now. And that's one of the goals, along with the homestead credit, to try to reduce the impact on residential folks. So, you know, I appreciate where you're coming from. Dollars mean different things to different folks. Just trying to get the facts there. I'm glad that $300,000 matched the median information that you got as well.
But I also would like to point out, this is for the infrastructure, not the rest center.
Correct.
There is no property tax, there's no property tax increase from the rest center. That, that debt service is paid back, sales tax revenue, not profit. This, this is for the $6 billion of the new road. I want to make sure that's clear because that's, makes a difference. Because I've said all along that we're going to do this thing without property tax. Again, to build it, we're not using property tax, we're using sales tax.
To maybe back on something that's tattooed here. I just alluded to a little bit, but if, if sales units for the course of the next 20 years stay static, loss tax will go up just based on inflation. So that's one way where this debt actually is smaller in comparison to what we're bringing in. But that, that assumes that, that assumes that property values also stay static too. Where property, I should say, property tax stays static. Where that means valuations don't grow up and we don't build any more buildings. So if, if we build any more buildings, that also widens that gap between, between the debt and the, the revenue. So there's, it's a double stack of, of delta between where we're the conservative version versus on a potential version.
Yeah, and Councilmember Hopkins, you're, you're, you're right on that. Folks like me typically won't present it both ways for that type of revenue stream. Just if, there's a variety of reasons, you just err on being the side of conservative. You're right about that. So I'm not trying to hide the ball, saying that that's not possible. It's just more often than not, we show that more conservative method. But you're, you're right there.
And those of us that are visual on that graph, that would make it.
Steeper.
Yes.
In theory.
More jumpy, like a more downhill.
That, that's, that's truly the amount of debt outstanding. So that wouldn't change unless you chose, or future councils chose to refinance that or pay it off early. What I think Councilmember Hopkins and the mayor were referring to was the actual incremental impact on the tax, tax rate. So the 69 cents that we have in there, if you've got a larger pie, that's not 69 cents anymore. It, it has a downward trend as well. Yeah.
Okay, I have one more thing. Can we go back to the, the chart to show the proceeds of our sales tax over the next 20 years? With a no-growth and with a growth. I just want to make sure the, it's kind of hard to ream these. The $1,804,935, that is just the state allocated property tax to the city.
Sales tax. And that's the state estimate for fiscal '25. And that's the city's allocation only, absent any revenue sharing agreement with the county.
Exactly. So that, that, that chart shows 50% going to the pay or rest center and 50% for other purposes over the 20.
Just under, just under 50% based on the historical growth rate?
Yes, yes. That's important for me because I've been saying that. But we also want to point out, Mandy, or Mike, I think in our current year budget, we also got $440,000, or projected to get $440,000 of sales tax revenue from the county, the revenue share, correct? And that's not included here. So this is just the state portion. Mandy, can you pull up the, the ballot language for our sales tax revenue? I think this is really important. So the citizens of this community approved a ballot referendum in 2023 to extend the local option sales tax for another 20 years. The ballot language was this. 0% shall be used for property tax relief. This is what the, this is what our taxpayers approved and said to council, we, we agree with you. Let's allocate 0% to tax, property tax relief. Let's allocate 100% of all our sales tax revenue for all these other purposes. And our recreation facilities specifically tied here, other recreation facilities, community center facilities, all of those. So council has a mandate from our taxpayers by the basis on the fact that they passed this tax to spend our money that way. So we, as a council, are going to approve the budget soon. And we are allocating $440,000 of sales tax revenue to property tax relief, which taxpayers agreed with us and said, don't do that. Now, I'm not advocating that we don't do that. We can do that because it says for any other purpose. And so I think that's good. But my point is, when you take that $440,000, which again will, will increase as sales tax increases over the period of this bond issue, we are going to end up spending well in excess of 50% of our sales tax revenues on other things other than the financing of the rest center. And obviously, it's projections, so, but anyway, you can tie up the future. So I think that's really important for everybody to understand that the, the 50% of our sales tax revenue don't sit at the rest center. We're going to be under that. That's what we've been talking about since April of 2022. These numbers, and, and Mike is an expert, tells us that.
That's why I say I just want the facts.
Well, I would, I would mention that that $415,000 is in the budget is for the full year of collecting the bonus, our extra 8% from Marion County. Our, our agreement goes to December 31st. So that number should have probably been, in my, in my book, should have been half of $415,000. Because we don't have a new agreement yet. And, and the other case, I know over a 20-year period, yeah, half of the, half of that money goes to the rest center. But in the first year, and it's been in, it's been published, it's 74% of that money goes to the rest center. 74%. Over the 20-year period, it turns out to be 50%. If it grows, it turns out to be 50%. But if it doesn't grow, it's going to be. But if it doesn't grow, it's going to be more than 50%. I expect it to grow. But I'm just saying, in the first year, 74% of the dollars go into the rec center. And today's dollars are worth more than those dollars 20 years from now because of inflation. So, that's, that's been a challenge for me to accept that, and I, I've talked about that a lot of times. So, anyway, that's my observation on that. Anybody else know anything for Mike?
Thanks, everybody.
What, where is that? Okay, before we go to Ballard King's presentation, we're talking about the financing of this project. I, I would invite Bob Zouster to, to come and talk a little bit about Pella and the incredible private funding for this project that this community has stepped up along the way. It's unprecedented in this community and unprecedented in most of them. Talking to people that do business around the state of Iowa and other communities, I'm a person who can talk about this kind of private support this project has.
Thank you. So, this evening, I am here representing the board of directors for Pella Rec. Pella Rec is a Bible I, C3 nonprofit corporation. The primary purpose of Pella, of the Pella Rec Corporation is to fundraise for the construction of the Pella Rec Center, the new Pella Rec Center, and, don't forget this, and for continuing operations. So, we just didn't set this organization up for a long time fundraising. It's an ongoing fundraising to cover not only the initial purpose of funding the rec center, but also to cover some of the ongoing expenses for it. It's a nonprofit organization, it's a tax deductible organization with all the benefits that gives you for fundraising. So, today, I'm sorry, the other board members on there are Kyle Nelson, Donna Smith, Dave Sutman, Sherri Kenbrothice, and me. So, today, Pella Rec has raised $17.6 million in cash and pledges. 1.69 of this is already in the city coffers. And so, you've seen it in the financing arrangements that Mike and others have shown. And we are now sitting on $16 million in pledges, $16,38,500. We're prepared to sign a 2080 agreement with the city of Pella to do what in Mike's language earlier, we're going to finance those private pledges. So, rather than the city having to make arrangements of collecting all the money on the pledges and making sure that they are indeed contributing at the level, Pella Rec is going to assume that responsibility. We've already made arrangements with Marion County Bank. They're going to collateralize the cash flow with these pledges. And so, we are very comfortable now that could sign that agreement, basically committing that we will sign the six, pay for the $16 million, our share of the Pella Rec project, contributing to half of the ongoing expenses to on the agreement that we've already worked out preliminary agreements for the 2080 agreement. So, that's what I'm here to say is, that's what Pella Rec is for. We think we've done our homework, we've prepared for this, and we're prepared to sign that agreement when the rec project is approved. Now, saying that, I'm going to move into a little different thing. This, this now is just Bob Zouster speaking, not on behalf of that board. I know some of you have also been doing some research as to what has happened in other cities, and I've come across a couple of what I think are interesting anecdotes. Another good Dutchman, Paul Tenhocken, he is the mayor of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I don't know whether you've paid attention, we've got two in the northwest part of the state and southeast South Dakota, where Charlie and I used to live. There are two old river towns. One's on the sewer, the one's on the Missouri River. They were dominated by Neet Patti in the late 1800s. So, in the mid 1800s, 1880s, 1890s, something like that, both of those cities were about 80,000 population, 85,000, something like that. Basically, twin cities. Today, Sioux Falls, South Dakota is about 250,000 population. Sioux City, Iowa, is still less than 90. 30 years ago, according to Paul Tenhocken, Sioux Falls made a conscious decision to invest in amenities, that is, trying to make the city a more appealing place to work, more appealing place to live, an easier place to recruit. And that's the benefits, they have the benefits of an enormously increasing population, increasing tax base. And how did they get there? According to Paul Tenhocken, it was by focusing on supplying amenities, exactly the kind of amenities we're talking about here with the rec center. And then there's Sioux Center. Sioux Center is about 75% of the size of Pella. A little over a year ago, in late 2023, they invested in a, a small dome. It's not big enough for a football dome, but they could play softball there. They did a, an informal economic impact assessment. And nobody could give me anything in the details of that, but they did give me the specific anecdotes. So, the first month that they had it in operation, local restaurants were complaining they didn't get a heads up that they were running out of food. Literally, they were midday on Saturday, they were running out of food. Since then, the local Jimmy John's operator has said his sales have doubled every Saturday. That's what he plans on double sales what they were before they put that dome in place. And they're up 40% on Sundays. During that time, they built a new hotel in Sioux Center, before the hotel were there primarily for business purposes. Now, their hotels are full on weekends. So, they, they're just collectively amazed. And Eric Mormon was one of the fellows I talked to, was on the city council there. And he said, given amount of private running, you've raised Pella for this, his word is just a no-brainer to move forward on that. So, I'll pass along that essence from Eric Mormon and encourage you to, to support the project. So, thank you for your time.
Any questions for Bob before he gets on?
Could you repeat the, the members on that board? I missed a couple of them.
Okay, sure. You're talking about on the rec center board.
Right.
Okay, that's, we've got Kyle Nelson, Donna Smith, Dave Sutman, Sherri Kenbrothice, and me.
Got them. What do you think?
As the mayor stated, folks here talked about, this session is operating for the proposed rec center. As part of this, the city possession of these ability studies on, on the recreation center. The initial ones were done in 2023. So, we thought it was important to update that study for tonight's meeting. And that's what we've invited Mr. Scott Karen from Ballard King. We were, we devised a publicated study that was also included in the council packet. A little bit before, we turned the floor over to Scott, and we looked at the Ballard King operational assessment. It had some alternatives in there. And what we looked at is, we had the full facility, which is the four gyms, a recreational pool, and competition pool. We also looked at an alternative, which we would replace the recreation pool, turf field. And then we also looked at an extension alternative, where we had three gyms, a competition pool, and a recreational pool. Now, based on Ballard King's analysis, it's important to understand, this analysis was based on additional revenues and additional expenditures of the Pella recreational center. Based off their analysis, it appears that the recreational center will have a positive cash flow over the first four years of operation, or three-year fiscal year in 2031 for the city of Pella. So, Manny, let's go ahead, please. It is also important to note that back in 2023, Ballard King also conducted an economic impact analysis on the benefit to the community of the different events at the recreational center. And we'd ask Scott to comment on that briefly, on the conclusion of his presentation. Based off Ballard King's previous analysis on the full build of the facility, they estimated the economic value to the community of $4.9 million to the community, and that was roughly computed on based off of the 208 development events for a recreational center. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. Scott Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Scott Karen, I'm with King and Associates. I've been with the firm for a little over three years. Prior to that, I was 27 years in the parks and recreation industry as a parks and recreation director, with the pleasure of being able to serve four different communities in four different states. Specifically, the one that's probably most comparable to Pella, Iowa, is Rolla, Missouri, a community of about 20, 20,000 people. Now, we're a half south of Columbia, Missouri, and we have 63,000 square foot indoor recreation center in that community. So, specifically, I have experience doing this nationally over the past couple of years, but specifically in, as an operator, in, in many different situations, in, in particular, one very similar to yours. King and Associates is a firm that's been around for 30 years, 30-plus years. Our primary focus is on feasibility studies, master plans, as well as operational audits, assessments of facilities, whether that's indoor or outdoor. We have over 70 years of experience and probably it's closer to 80 years now. One of the reasons that we were brought on to teams and to, whether it's the architect or the city itself, is because we are a third-party independent analysis for these projects. So, when we start with a feasibility study, the, the first thing we look at is the primary service area. In this instance, the primary service area we utilized is the Pella zip code. So, there's just under 15,000 total residents within that population. We know and understand that these types of facilities draw from a much broader area, especially when we start talking about venues that can host tournaments and have additional court spaces as well as indoor, indoor pool spaces. So, we looked at that area of about 30, 30-minute drive with extended out in certain areas. In addition, we wanted to make sure that, that we know that they're not going, you're not going to get a tremendous number of members from those outlying areas, but just within a 15- or 20-minute timeframe, there's an additional 10,000 to 15,000 residents. So, again, when we start talking about the likelihood of folks utilizing the facilities, not just the, the primary service area, which is Pella, but we know it's going to be beyond that. So, that's built into the, the projects that, that we move forward with. So, next. When we look at the primary service area, there are four, four primary things that we, we start to take a look at. The first one is population size. And so, as, as council mentioned earlier, 50,000 is not necessarily a magical number, but it's one that we kind of look at as, as a starting point as far as, as a facility is concerned. Certainly, the, the population here is less. The one thing that I would point out, in addition to having a large secondary service area, is the daytime population in Pella exceeds the overnight population due to the employment base that is here. So, there's a, a lot of folks that are coming into this community that are not necessarily residents that have the potential for utilizing the facility. The second one is the median age of the community. The reason this is important is because it starts to tell us the story of who the, the people are and what the community looks like from the standpoint of families. And when we do that, particularly the households with children, because we know they use facilities for indoor, outdoor facilities, athletics and sports at a much higher rate than what others do. And so, the, the population here has nearly 40% of households with children, again, far exceeding the national average. So, the next slide, then the indicator is household income. When we start talking about income, again, a gentleman mentioned earlier, the household, or the median household income for Pella is over $90,000. So, again, far exceeding the, not only the state average, but the national average as well. The, the flip side of that is, we also want to understand what the expenditures are. Because if they do match that high level, then, then you don't have as much of a discretionary income associated with it. However, that when compared to the national average, you're only, the housing costs are about 3% to 4% higher than the national average, but the median income is 20% greater than the national average. So, again, there's a delta and an interest in entertainment and spending on recreation. So, you can see that on that bottom chart. I know there's a lot of information there. But the, the market potential index, or spending potential index for entertainment and recreation is about 110, meaning it's 10% greater than the, the national average. So, housing was about 100, about 3% greater, recreation spending is 10% greater. Again, there's an extreme interest in spending on parks and recreation within this community. So, next. The next thing we talk, we take a look at is the market penetration potential for various activities. And in particular, anything above 100 means it's exceeding the national average. Just because something is below the national average doesn't mean that it's something that shouldn't be considered a part of any type of facility. Oftentimes, well, in our experiences, there are not facilities to be able to utilize for your community to be able to participate in those activities. So, one of the questions originally that was asked is on the indoor aquatic side thing. As you can see, swimming parks exceed the national average when it comes to Pella. So, again, that's a key indicator where aquatics certainly should be a part of, of this facility. Although basketball and volleyball, which are typically court spaces, aren't quite up to that, as you heard earlier, the, the lack of gym space is a deterrent to participation in those types of activities. So, having additional court space is an imperative for, for moving the project forward. Next. So, all of those indicators would tell us that while the population size of, of, of Pella may not be up to what we would hope to look for, there are a number of other indicators that have a strong suggestion of not only the participation, the support, and the ability to, to generate revenue from this facility.
Yes, sir.
Is it okay if I, do you mind going back that chart? I had a hard time seeing around Jeff.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot there.
Certain interest in the 112 NPI, which indicates...
12%, 12% greater than the national average. Anything...
National average.
100 is the national average.
And basketball, 94, doesn't mean there's no interest, but that's slightly below the national average.
Yes, sir. And, and the one thing I will point out is, this is adult participation, so 18 and above. We also use other sources, which again, that information is in your packet, which is National Sporting Goods Association, which ties in participants seven and above. And so, that participation rate, we know in volleyball in particular, and in basketball, has a much greater participation rate in those age groups and those demographics than it does in the older ones as well.
I'm getting that ping pong is almost as important as pickleball.
So, we see this often with pickleball. We just saw a report today that the annual increase in participation exceeded 50% over the past year. So, over the past 10 years, the growth rate exceeded 500% in participational for pickleball. Again, if I would ask you 10 years ago what pickleball was, nobody would be able to answer it. I certainly think that everybody wouldn't be able to do so today.
That's probably not true of Pella. If we had a Canadian who taught PE in this town.
So, I'd like to mention and start off with, with my background a little bit because that starts to, to help frame the approach that we take into these projects. These are oftentimes once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for communities, parks and recreation directors, city council mayor, and city administrators. And so, we don't take that lightly. We know and understand the impact these can, and potentially will have on future budgets and future councils. So, we usually utilize best practices in doing this, but also, we have, we take a very conservative approach. Again, the reason we want to do that is, if this is the worst-case scenario, and that's okay, then we feel confident that you'll be able to exceed what the operational plan that we put in there. Not saying that we try to minimize it, I just share that to tell you that we feel comf- we feel very comfortable and confident in the, in the, our past experiences. Again, being around for 30, 40 years and doing this across the country, if we weren't successful in what we do, I don't think we would be around that long. So, we do take a conservative approach. And you'll see that with our staffing plan that we've put together. This is a conservative community, we want to be respectful and understand that. Couple other assumptions, city of Pella would be the operator in this scenario. There are other providers that may be able to do so, but we, we would recommend at least moving forward with the city staff being able to do that. It's based on the, the new revenues and expenditures for the recreation center, and we utilize the market penetration rate of 10.6%. 23 and a half percent of Americans are members of a fitness facility. So, we use less than half of that rate for Pella. We work in a number of communities that, that have 15% to 18% penetration rate as far as their membership is concerned. Again, being a conservative, because recreation, the, the membership and admissions are a very important driver for the revenue of these facilities, we want to make sure that they're working... conservative in our approach to that. We often, we usually target around ten percent. In this instance, we settled on ten point six percent. As I mentioned, if you start taking a look at that secondary service area, the penetration rate falls to less than half a percent of that total service area. So again, we feel very confident in the participation that we can deal with. The other item that we always recommend is that there's an annual allocation for future equipment replacement. These facilities, as you guys have seen, are very costly, but the equipment to operate them is as well. And so we always, we recommend having a sinking fund that's set aside. In this instance, we're setting about eighty thousand dollars that's set aside, so that in years five, six, seven, when you start again, getting, having equipment failures of motors, pumps, HVAC, those items that have a higher ticket price, that you have a portion of funding available to be able to offset some of those. Again, the worst-case scenario is you have to, if somebody has to come up here and compete against a, something against public safety or streets, or streets. Those are challenges for communities, and parks and recreations can sometimes fall off to the wayside. So if there's at least a portion of funding set aside, that benefits everybody in the year. So that, those, again, those dollars are allocated within this operational model. So when we start talking about staffing, I mentioned earlier, it's a lean staffing plan. The ones in red or maroon are the positions that City of Pella currently has or will adjust to be able to be housed within this. And then there are additional positions that we're recommending to add. As you can see, one for administrative support, one for fitness programming, that can also do other recreation programs, events, not only within the rec center but community-wide. Maintenance, again, you're talking about an eighty thousand square foot building that does need somebody that has a keen awareness to be able to operate those types of systems. And then it's imperative to be able to maintain and clean, have a clean building if you want people to continue to come in there. So again, having that custodial staff available to be able to do that. So all told, the two biggest items with any operation of a recreation center, number one is personnel costs. That's typically sixty to sixty-five percent of your overall operational cost. The second item is utilities costs. Utility costs are typically around fifteen percent of your overall expenditures, and so you'll find that in that contractual line item right there. So again, I mentioned the capital replacement fund of about eighty thousand, so the total expenditures are just shy of one point eight million dollars on the facility. So the revenues are based on, the primary revenue source is membership, and these are the proposed fees that we have included in here, whether it's the daily admission or monthly memberships. We often see communities provide discounts for paying all a lump sum, all upfront, or other, you know, having shorter terms, whether it's a three-month membership, having different fees there as well. But again, to build the model, we use these daily rates as well as monthly memberships. And this is comparable within the market, understanding that this facility's not opening for two years. The cost of things are gonna continue to rise, so we've built in that into these figures as well as the expenditure side on the salaries and other items as well. So all told, as I mentioned, the membership is just in daily admissions, let alone over one million dollars. And then programs, recreation programs and events that are, recreation programs and activities that can take place, about a hundred and seventy thousand, and then rentals, three hundred and seventy thousand, all told, for just under one point six million dollars in revenue that's generated from those sources. So when you look at it at the whole, on the whole, from a revenue expense standpoint, there's a little bit of a gap. However, the Pella High School donation that is on your agenda as well, of two hundred and fifty thousand, would allow you to have a net positive result in the overall operation of the facility. As mentioned earlier, the original economic impact statement that we had put together was about twenty-eight different events when we built this operational plan. Again, being conservative, we did so with fourteen events. So again, when you try to understand, moving forward, the events, not only the membership, the programs, nor the rentals, we feel are at capacity as we put this together for you And I believe that's the last one. So again, try to be respectful of your time. The packet that we provided for you, I think, is over forty pages, so there's a lot of detail to back up the information that was presented in these few short slides. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Mike, I have a quick question. While this is fresh in my mind, if you went out to school, supporting Pella, Pella Virgin S, what's our current pool operating subsidy? I know it's off the top of my head.
Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the current indoor pool has a subsidy of right around three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Right around there.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, this rec center operates, has got less subsidy than the city area, you know, like, you know, of the high schools for just five years. I interpreted that correctly?
Based on the valid team analysis, that's here to be a factor statement.
When you look at the membership on page forty, it's generating nine hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars. That takes, at the household rate, would take six hundred and fifty-seven households.
Yes, sir.
Which is eighteen percent for those households. It's eighteen percent. To get to that number, so I was, when you use ten percent, where do you apply the ten percent?
It's ten percent of households.
Well, ten percent of the household would be three hundred and fifty.
There's forty-eight hundred households.
So here, you're on page nine, it says number of households with children in the primary service area is fifteen hundred and seventy-three. And on page...
All right, so on page seven?
Yeah.
The total households is fifty-three. Fifty-three hundred and sixty households.
Yeah, it's fifty-three hundred, but, okay, so it would still take more than ten percent of those people. Anyway, okay. I just, I think we're, the other thing I noticed was that the age group seventy-five plus grows thirty percent over the next five years, while most of the other age groups are still pretty static.
Yes, sir.
And another interesting thing, as a sleeper in all this, that we don't think about very much, because it's hard to see, is that the current Pella High School population, seniors, is about two hundred, eleventh grade, two twenty, tenth grade, two ten, but you jump down to sixth grade, it drops to a hundred and sixty-seven. And first grade, a hundred and thirty-six. This is a declining birth rate that we're facing. And...
It's just a public school, though.
Yeah, it's not, it's just a public school, but it's an indicator. And I blast the guy that has eight kids, I think we should, if we get this bill, we need to get discounts for our families. I got the business, my four favorite, it was a sixth master.
But I would agree with you absolutely, that we would have, you know, that would be council's decision to figure the fees, but having some kind of family discounts would make all the sense to a lot of us.
We need to encourage that.
Hundred percent. But I also think that the swimming, people that are swimming with families, not part of you guys. You guys are in Paroby.
Yeah. I love that.
What do you estimate it costs you on an annual basis? If you have a child that's in swimming, going to nude for practice however many days, those kinds of things, what...
Yes.
I don't know, I think you...
I don't know how you could actually measure that, because a lot of us have taken off work to drive our kids up there. So there, you have to add that to the cost as well.
Yeah, so it really happens. I've heard, I've heard other swimming parents talk about going to a swim meet in Minneapolis and spending. So the fee for the full facility in these was a hundred and fifteen dollars a month. That's thirteen hundred dollars a year. I've heard people talk about spending twelve hundred dollars for a weekend. So the cost for this facility would be way cheaper to have the facility in there, without driving the nude and wherever else people go and get practices and all of that. So I think, to me, that increases the likelihood of higher membership levels than we're used in this plant. You know, John, this is how John and I see things right now. John looks at that fifty-six-page facility plan, and he focuses on fifty thousand population. I, and that's fine, I don't, I don't, you have every right to do that, and I understand that. I look at that facility plan, and I see it scattered, or in that, several times it says conservative. We use conservative estimates, we use conservative estimates. I've lived in this community for forty-seven years, and there's one thing that Pella does, it outperforms its population in every metric, in every measure. And so, we're talking about conservative numbers already, so the likelihood of this facility outperforming what we're talking about, in my opinion, is extremely high, based on how Pella performs.
I just wanna make two points, if you don't mind. So one is on the pool side thing. So I was a competitive swimmer, I swam at the University of Missouri, and so I understand competitive swimming very much, as somebody that my parents drove me around to swim meets, and then doing that collegiately. The benefit of separating those bodies of water is having two different pool temperatures. Right now, the pool temperature that I imagine is, that the current facility operates, is one that nobody likes. It's too hot for some and too cold for others, and so that's usually the perfect pool temperature. But having the ability to have two separate pools allows for the competition pool to be at a point that is more conducive for those types of activities, while having a recreation pool provides for the art varieties classes that were mentioned earlier, swim lessons without the lips turning blue, and those types of things as well. So I do wanna point out that. The second thing I do wanna mention, too, is that we have worked in a number of communities that are both larger and smaller as far as building operational plans together. I've worked in Wapton, South, or North Dakota, sorry, a population of seven thousand, and they move, they're moving forward with a hundred and ten thousand square foot facility because they wanna have turf in their facility. So, but their interest and their intent in doing that had as much to do with helping wellness of their overall community, and not just the financial component of it. And that facility was not really full cost recovery, but I mentioned that to say that every community that has a different value that they place on those price points, and then participation. And it's a balancing act when you try to do that on how you're gonna philosophically operate a facility. And so if you want to have greater participation, you may have an interest in lowering those fees to allow for greater participation. In Missouri, we had a very, very low rate, and we had a higher return, higher participate, or higher fee, we had a very low fee, sorry, and a higher participation. We were consistently asked to generate additional dollars but not raise the fees. And there's only so much, there's two inputs. It's participants in the fees, and if you can't raise your fees, the only thing you can do is get additional participants. We were able to have over eighteen percent participation rate, but we couldn't quite get there because our council said they did not wanna raise fees for the revenue. So again, I'm not advocating one way or other, but every community is different on how they val, how they value and the philosophy as far as operating these facilities. We've worked in a number of communities that are subsidized and their facilities of similar size, similar to the tune of five to six hundred thousand dollars annually, because they just feel that that's appropriate for their community, and their community has supported that. So again, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I just share that that does occur nationally. We have worked in a number of Iowa communities, worked in Waterloo on their, on their outdoor pools, as well as their, working on their indoor sports complex. Again, that's, that one's intended to be a revenue generator. Everywhere's a little different, so it's hard to compare apples to apples. And then when you start asking for their operations, you end up finding out that they're not including the utilities, they're not including full-time staff costs, they're not including some of these types of things. So again, it's, I just share all that information to provide you with as much, as much as I can, in the time that I'm here with you, and I'm happy to answer as many questions as you have. So we've done this for a long time, and I love what I do, hope that comes through, and I love helping communities, because these are game changers in so many different ways.
Any other questions?
Mr. Merrick?
Yeah.
Since you did address the audience around the swimming, I did wanna cut off what was being said there. Could you go back to your index where it showed swimming at nineteen hundred participants? So to Mr. Butler, your point here, right now there's nineteen hundred participants at eighteen plus that are looking to be utilizing the facility, thinking about the different companies that are in town here that are promoting the rec center. There are all sorts of things that aren't being analyzed here, where those employees could be offered additional...
Sir, did you say that to the microphone?
I think his intent is employee memberships and participation.
Yes, employee memberships and the growth. So swimming is a huge element that can actually have additional charges, like the C Swim Group, who has paid additional amounts. So from a financial aspect, there's a lot of dollar elements here that aren't gonna show increase. And looking at some of the numbers, there's like forty-nine thousand per year, one million dollars over gold, that's just the swimming area, and you add to the different companies contributing to their use of the facility, I think that number's gonna go up pretty easily.
I would love to have every member of TeleCorp, Merer, PPI, as a member of the club, as a benefit from the company.
Absolutely.
So, and that rate would, about seven hundred dollars a year if they're a member, they wouldn't have to give the six million.
No brainer.
Yeah. But I don't think they're gonna do that.
I don't think they wanna do that.
What?
I don't think we wanna do that.
I don't think... Can you imagine, can you imagine if TeleCorp and Merer gave all their employees membership here, here saying, well, that's six, that's six thousand membership at the gym. This facility is not...
Only so many people show up to the gym. We really pay for it.
That's six thousand members. Well, you could not possibly handle six thousand. Anyway, any other questions? Respect your time, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Before we move away from the operations, and there's been a lot of talk about Pella's not big enough, so I've asked Mayor Mans, or I've asked Pace, Karen's Guns, and Mayor Mansfield, is gonna just give us some statistics about how we perform at a much higher rate than our population.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. You guys usually get to hear, everyone's told, we're broke. Usually get to hear from Karen, but she can't be here with us tonight, so I said I would step in, and I serve as the director of Business Development and Community Engagement for the Pella Area Community and Economic Pace Alliance. So now we're at Pace, so I don't have to go through the whole name throughout it. So at the Pace Alliance, we have a lot of members, we have a lot of initiatives, and when it comes to making a big decision, there's always two things we go back on, especially big, major decisions. And the first is community needs, whether that's our business, our workforce, our local economy, what are the needs of our communities and our members? And the second thing is solid data. We ask ourselves, you know, what do the numbers tell us? And it really helps guide things beyond... And it really helps guide things beyond opinions and emotions that get involved in big decisions sometimes. So tonight, I'm not going to sway you with sentiment, although I can be very charming. But I wanted to provide you with some facts and just data about, you know, is Pella right size for a rec center? We believe it's important to look at that question and answer it through a lens of data. So I'm going to share this information that we've gathered. I'm not an expert like some of the gentlemen who spoke, but we've hired experts to help us. So we've contracted with the Retail Coach, Iowa Workforce Development, the Iowa Department of Revenue, and Placer AI to get some of these numbers. I worked. Mandy trusted me with the clicker. So first and foremost, Karen actually presented these numbers a few months ago, a couple of months ago. But I did want to review them and go over what does Pella look like? What's our barometer as Pella itself? So the first is our jobs. So based on Iowa workforce, Pella has thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety-five jobs in its community. And then this next one, which I think we made Karen made the council guess, and I don't think anyone was even close to it. But Pella pays their employees, not Telecorp, but Pella City five oh two one nine pays their employees almost a billion dollars in wages. Nine hundred and twenty-nine million in wages. That economic impact never ceases to amaze me no matter how many times I see it and the importance of keeping all of our businesses, large and small, here in Pella. Next, we go to our retail spending. So this is actually an updated number from what was presented. And Pella had over three hundred and one million dollars spent in retail spending for two thousand twenty-four. And that's actually about a nine percent increase from it was the previous year. And that's both local and visitor spending. Then our median household income, you guys can take it up with the census. There was a number on this. I like your nineties number better than this. But we were given the number, the household median income for Pella is about eighty-one thousand two hundred and one dollars. And that is higher than the state average. And then each year, or excuse me, in two thousand twenty-four alone, Pella actually saw one point six million visits to the Central Business District. And I want to do a quick review on how we get that number because sometimes people say, well, how how do you know you got those visits? So the visitation rate. So in case you didn't know, your cell phones are tracked. That data is tracked. And we actually have access to Placer AI. And it's a third-party company. And what they do is they put an invisible fence around an area and track those cell phones. And so we had them put that invisible fence around our Central Business District simply because that's our highest concentration of businesses, you know, restaurants, retailers. And if you look at that purple bluish box, that is exactly what we geo-fenced. Includes the Mollengrot, Historical Village, some service industries as well. So our two thousand twenty-four numbers, we saw three hundred and eight thousand visitors come to Pella or cell phones come to Pella. Sometimes not every family has more than one cellphone, so the children, so it's probably actually higher than that. But three hundred and eight cell phones came to Pella in two thousand twenty-four. And they said that the visit frequency of those cell phones were just over five visits each. And doing the math, that equals one point six million visits in two thousand twenty-four to Pella. And it's kind of nice for you, Spencer, since you you like the visual. We put it on a graph and you can see the big spike is Tool of Time. And one thing we've noticed that's really exciting to see is we're starting to see bigger spikes different times of the year. In years past, when we've done this, it's been a little bit more level and a really big spike at Tool of Time. And now we're seeing other spikes like the one you can see in July, August-ish, that is from Knoxville Nationals. And then you see in our Christmas, we've added Christmasmart and a lot of Christmas lights and have really tried to do do it up at Christmas and we're starting to see spikes in those areas, too. So now I also want to explore a visitation number that doesn't get talked about a lot, which is really surprising because I think it's one of our hugest assets that we have here in our area. And that's visitation to Lake Red Rock. So Lake Red Rock is Iowa's largest lake. And we talked and partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And they said they see about one or one million visits each year. And they estimate a regional economic impact of about three point one million dollars. So I also want to make note of that that those numbers are in addition to the numbers that we see at from our Central Business District. And then these are people, you know, people who use the lake, they're our target audience and market as well. We want them to choose Pella. We want them to come here and dine and use and get their supplies here and grocery shop and not go to other communities. Come to Pella when you do that and are on the lake. So we've talked about Pella's barometer. We've talked about visitor numbers. And the next thing I want to talk about is our retail trade area. So I know Scott brought up a a market analysis of an area. This is specifically through the lens of retail trade. So it's a little bit different than what he talked about. So Pace actually contracted with the Retail Coach to define what those numbers look like. You know, what what is the true amount of people that are using our community, whether it be for healthcare, banking, to purchase their cars, services, shopping, restaurants, recreation, or to even work? What does that number actually look like? And the study also showcased the leakage and gaps that are in our community and what people are leaving for. So that whole retail trade area, the primary area is about a ten-mile radius. And then the second tier would be the second the second retail trade area. And the total of those peoples, about ninety-four thousand, just over ninety-four thousand people that are considered in our retail trade area. So looking at this from that lens, Pella is a whole lot bigger and there's a lot more people that use our community than just our population. And they all contribute to our three hundred and one million dollars spent. Yeah, the people are choosing our companies, they're choosing our businesses, and they're making a huge economic impact from both our primary and our secondary retail trade area. So now that we have defined Pella's numbers, the next question is how does Pella compare? So we dove into and partnered to compare Pella to some accurate, realistic communities. So from this, and you'll go on to see this, Pella actually performs like a city that has a population of twenty to twenty-five thousand people. So up to two, two and a half times the size that we actually are based on our population. So we compared two similar-sized cities, Carroll and Spencer. And then we compared two larger cities, Burlington and Marshalltown. So first, in our annual spending, we know Pella's spending is three hundred and one million dollars. Carroll is a little higher at three twenty-one. Spencer is a little higher at three forty-five, which was interesting that I actually thought it was going to be higher because those are both regional hubs. So that surprised me. It was actually not higher. And then Burlington, which has two point three times the size of our population, only saw annual spending of three hundred and thirty-three million dollars. And then Marshalltown, two point seven times our size, so only saw annual spending of three hundred and ninety-seven million. Definitely not two point seven times the spending, but but a little higher. Next, we go into jobs. So we know Pella has over thirteen hundred jobs, excuse me, thirteen thousand jobs here in the community. Carroll saw fewer jobs at about eight thousand. Spencer, just slightly more, a little under fifteen thousand. Burlington had less jobs than us at eleven thousand. And then Marshalltown had slightly higher jobs than us at fourteen-five. So when it comes to total wages, so we know Pella's spending is almost, or excuse me, Pella's wages and our employees are paid almost a billion dollars annually. So looking at Carroll and them having fewer jobs, their employees annually are paid about four hundred and eighteen million. So over half then less than what Pella plays pays their employees. Then we get to Spencer, which has slightly more jobs. They still pay their employees significantly less than Pella plays pays theirs at four hundred and forty million dollars. We get to Burlington, which has a few less jobs. They pay their employees five hundred and five million dollars. The only community that even came close to paying the amount of wages that our companies, businesses, big, small, pay is Marshalltown. And they still paid their employees a hundred and twenty-three million dollars less than Pella pays their employees. Which was really, really surprising and it really, I think, goes to the data speaks for itself. I think it really goes to the impact of our companies, our businesses, and that of what they pay the employees here in our community. And of course, I couldn't do a slide without this, but what we're all here talking about is the rec center. So all of these communities have listened to what their employers want, have listened to what their community needs, and they've addressed recreation concerns and and hit those. And and it tells me once you hit a certain level of jobs in a community and you've hit a certain amount of wages paid, or in this case, even less than we have, there's certain amenities that people look for in a community. And there's certain amenities that people look for when they're looking for a job. So putting this all together, I really want to go over three things that go back to Pella's footprint, economy, and demand far exceeds our census number. Pella functions like a city of twenty to twenty-five thousand people in terms of retail spending, jobs, wages, and retail trade areas. Pella needs to be competitive in a national and international job market. We not only need to keep the businesses we have, we need to attract new ones. And in fact, from the two thousand twenty-four Marion County Housing Study that we partnered on, it came up that Marion County is expected to add about twenty-five, twenty-five hundred new jobs in the next five years. We need to attract talent. We found this statistic that said seventy-eight percent of millennials say access to quality recreation is a key factor in choosing where to live. And I actually want to take that a step further based on a personal experience. So last year, or excuse me, last week, Pace hosted a student panel and we invited students from Central College and William Penn University to come speak, answer questions with our local employers about what they're looking for when they are entering the workforce, what they want out of their employer, all sorts of things. And one thing that came out of it is every single one of those panelists said they will choose a community, its amenities, and what the community can provide them before they choose a job. The job was less important to them than the community they are going to live in. I found that really interesting. The third point is we need to address the underserved demand and overuse of existing facilities. Pella's current facilities frequently reach maximum usage and program capacity. Used sports participation is high and growing from baseball, volleyball, and swimming leagues and more. It often requires out-of-town travel due to lack of appropriate local facilities. There is currently no large multipurpose indoor facility for year-round use by families, seniors, employees, visitors, tournaments, everyone. So after breaking down the numbers, reviewing the data, and looking closely at the size and needs of our community, we return to the question, is Pella right size for a rec center? As you continue to discuss this and perhaps vote on this this evening, I truly hope this information and data helps you as you make informed, thoughtful decisions, ones that will shape the future of Pella in meaningful ways. This conversation is more than just a building. It's about listening to the numbers and supporting the vitality of our local businesses, both large and small. It's about helping employers stay rooted here and thrive. It's about bolstering our economy, attracting and retaining talent, and continuing to market Pella as a place where people want to live, work, and grow. It's supporting the dynamic growth of our community for a thriving and vibrant Pella. And if anyone needs any of this data, we're we're more than happy to share it with you. We've got we've got lots of folders and lots of pages that we can give you if you want. And I just thank you for for letting me speak and I don't know, hopefully no one has any questions. But if you do, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I also invited Eric Sichler to come. He's involved in Spirit of Pella, which hopefully everyone in this room is aware of Spirit of Pella, the Spirit of Pella and some of the things that they're doing. Eric has had a career of of field analysis and he's got some pretty interesting results of surveys and those kind of things that I think that everyone is be helpful to understand that. So thank you, Governor Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great to be here. One of my favorite mentors always said, without data, it's only an opinion. And that's one of my mantras, without data, it's only an opinion. Mary talked about Pace really leaning into identifying the needs of the community. Spirit of Pella is more focused on identifying the wants of the community. And we formed about, well, twenty twenty-one, and Mary was actually one of our founding founders, founding founders, along with Kristy Vanderport, under the auspices of Pace. We were really founded to bring all the do-good organizations within the community together to work together, to collaborate. Because we have a wonderful collection of community betterment organizations. We sought opportunity for synergy by bringing those folks together to communicate regularly. And to that end, we host three times a year a session called Elevate Pella, where we bring together a whole bunch of community organizations and they talk about their hopes and their dreams and their plans and their priorities. And we've already identified, just in the couple of years we've been doing that, great opportunities for collaboration. The other thing that we at Spirit of Pella do on a regular basis is strategic planning. We're an organization that, you know, has a bunch of marketers involved in the process. And we know that we need to identify our goals and our priorities in a strategic way. So do I have a clicker, Mandy? How about the next slide? One of the reasons, one of the inputs that we bring to our strategic planning process is mounted on our website, spiritofpella.org. Spiritofpella.org. And that survey has been up now for about two years. We asked five questions and we've not changed those questions. And then periodically, we pull the data, do an analysis, and we share that with the organizations that come to our Elevate Pella process. You can see the five questions. We don't want to ask a lot of questions because we don't want to suppress response. So we want to have a short form of questions. They're all open-ended. This is not a quantitative survey. This is very much a qualitative survey. I kind of liken this to opening up a town hall meeting to anybody who wants to come and talk about a topic or share their vision and dream for Pella. We've got three hundred and thirty folks who've taken taken this survey so far. You can see the five questions. I'm not going to read them for you, but Mandy, the next slide, please. We're going to focus tonight on the wants to achieve the vision for Pella that folks have identified in the first question or two. What should we invest in as a community? All right, we're going to do this in a David Letterman style. We're going to go from ten to one, just to keep you in suspense. So these these are based on a number of of specific, or maybe not so specific, but tangential references to specific kinds of concepts, ideas, programs, projects, and opportunities that this community, at least three hundred and thirty people, that we couldn't fit them in here tonight, if we asked them, this is the sound that we hear from their voices. So number ten, Mandy. Enhanced communication and collaboration. I'm not going to insult your intelligence by reading these to you because they're pretty self-explanatory. But members of this community would like us to communicate more effectively and efficiently on a regular basis and collaborate. Number nine, Mandy. Support for local businesses and entrepreneurship. Strong local economy provides jobs, contributes to our vitality. It's very important to communities of residents, people who live here, people who work here. I should say that the folks who took this survey really represented the broad array of Pella residents and workers. So we've got folks from, we have three or four elementary school kids who've taken this survey. Very cool. Mandy, number eight. Infrastructure improvements with a pedestrian focus. We found this fascinating. People want to be outside. They want to be in our local community, our retail area. They want to be able to walk safely, comfortably throughout the community. So sound infrastructure, debut is essential for safety and quality of life. Mandy, number seven. Community building events and connections. Cindy was here earlier talking about the big opera house, woo-hoo. People in Pella love to get together for things that bring people together. So that's the number seven of the ten that they identified as their their top priorities. Bands, outdoor things, create and strengthen sense of community. Mandy, number six. Preservation of our Dutch heritage, our unique heritage and welcoming ways. It's fascinating to read the inputs because people are very concerned that we are a very welcoming community to all kinds of people, which is at the very foundation of our beginnings, right? So number five, number six, Mandy, support for the arts and culture year-round. I think it's important to identify that they they told us they want arts and culture and activities in that sort of domain happening in this community, not just in particular times of the year with year-round. Mandy, number four. Vibrant, thriving downtown, beyond retail. While the charm of downtown shops is highly valued, there's a desire for more diverse offerings, including mom-and-pop restaurants, perhaps a brewery or a board game cafe, ensuring that existing businesses can thrive. Number three, Mandy. Enhanced and accessible recreation, primarily outdoor. Consistent request for a splash pad. The splash pad comes up again and again and again. Rotary is thinking about that, right, Bob? Yeah, Rotary Splash Pad. It's in the works. Addressing the enhancing the quality of life and priority of healthy family, friendly options. All right, number two, Andy. This was a this was a telltale for us because there's enough buzz in this community about indoor rec that it shows up as the number two most highly prized and valued investment. rec that it shows up as the number-two most highly prized and valued investment that this community can make, according to these 330 people. So I've saved you the trouble of listening to 330 people at this podium by sharing with you that indoor recreation facility, specific indoor recreation facility for all ages, has a very strong desire within this community. It's a want. Anyone want to guess number one? Oh, come on, people. Mandy Costco. Mandy, number one. No surprise there. Very consistent. We've seen it in this community for years for housing issues. I think the relative order of these recommendations from across our community are really, really important. And they have varied a little bit as the respondents have come in over time over the two-year period. We're going to continue to collect this data. We're going to continue to monitor how the relative, work with each other in terms of the 1 through 10. Mandy, next slide, please. I'd really encourage you, those of you who are taking pictures of slides tonight, take a picture of that and then take the survey. And encourage your friends and family to take the survey, because this data really is feeding and fueling a lot of strategic planning across a lot of organizations in the community, including the city council, who participates in our Elevate Pella sessions. Mandy, next slide, please. Thanks for the opportunity. These are the members of the Spirit of Pella Board. We're very happy to have this opportunity to share, and we are fully behind this indoor recreation issue. Questions?
Questions, Fred? Well, thanks for being here, and thanks to Spirit. Thanks to Spirit of Pella, because they are absolutely doing some amazing things around the community. And as Mary showed with some of the visits, the off-tu-look times, Stephen, we're getting a lot of spikes in other times of the year, and a lot of that has to do with what Spirit of Pella has been doing. So can't underestimate how much that appreciate, that grew and what that did. So, you know, the subject here was Pella's bigger, we're formed much bigger than the our population. I have one story to tell, and then I'll be done. So I was on a panel a couple of months ago in Des Moines integration, one partnership, which is, I don't know, for lack of better words, it's a large chamber conference, a large group that covers seven counties, and Marion County is part of that. So we're talking about in excess of well over a million people represented through these organizations. So I was on a panel as the mayor of Pella with the mayor of West Des Moines, the mayor of Urbandale, and the mayor of Litterst. They chose a couple larger communities, a smaller community. So I think sometimes we take, we take, we take Pella for granted and don't realize what we have, because we're here, we're in it, we don't see it. But I can assure you that the rest of the state of Iowa and the rest of a lot of the country does understand what we have and who we are. Because we were talking, and one of the questions was, what are you worried about? So the mayor of West Des Moines, which West Des Moines is 85,000 people and growing, it's a big, was talking about, his concern was, they had just gotten a Ruth Chris Steakhouse. Now, if you've ever been to a Ruth Chris Steakhouse, you know, you're going to spend 220 bucks for two people's meal. But anyway, and he was concerned that their population wouldn't grow because there needed to be enough people to support a Ruth Chris Steakhouse. So he was going on and on and on, and I was sitting there. I just had this urge, I grabbed the microphone, and I said, "Well, we have a chick to light it up." And he said, his exact words were, "Well, Pella always punches its weight back." So everybody else around us understands this community. We need to understand and appreciate, because we have something very special here. And this is a huge opportunity to add to the amenity this community needs and wants. So are we going to, we've got Mark here now, or are we going to do that later?
Actually, I think that we have a brief from the rec center for two items. America's okay. I promise I'll do briefs. Okay, we do have some city people outside of the rec center to take care of tonight. So let's briefly go on to this item. And what we have here is a resolution that accepts the final quantity change order and accepts a project for the Idaho Drive Underground Conversion Project. For those of you that may not be aware of the project, what this is simply doing is varying our lines that are currently overhead on the Idaho Drive Underground. Very important reliability project. The city goes and connects this particular line to Fort Worth Recreation Plan, along with their new Wells, uh, number one, two, is also reliability standpoint, important project, city select utility. This resolution accepts the project tonight, and also change order number one for the project. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Briefly walk through council. We started off with the construction contract, $635,000, page 48, $635,048.96. Change order number one was simply a final quantities adjustment, so reconciling what was the bid as far as the quantities versus what was actually placed in the ground. That totaled $51,141.73. Council were to accept this project tonight, we would be left with a total project cost of just over $657,000. Now, it is important to note, we are going to withhold $27,000 payment for Merple Tower. Mayor Paul, we did have, council certainly aware of this, an outage on this line where we struck our fiber optic systems, one of the few outages that we have had in Pella. Thankfully, our crew were able to get the survey back for us, but we did incur significant financial damage to our fiber optic network. Our fiber store would withhold that from this contract as well. So the final quantities or final contract prices, $659,000. And we are recommending approval of the resolution to the mayor.
All right, we get this from the wrong order. I need to read the resolution. So this resolution number 683, entitled the resolution accepting change order number one, final quantity adjustment accepting project and authorizing a final payment to Merple Tower purposes for orphaned facilities with the Idaho Drive Underground Conversion Project, and a motion for approval to, or Hopkins and Stryland, any discussion?
When will we, when will the electricity be turned on?
What, I don't know what you're asking, where or when?
When will we have power in that conduit?
Oh, I don't know. The very lights, yeah, I don't know. Nate's not here, so I can't answer.
That'll depend on the individual customers, which you know, for the mayor on time, or that stuff.
Okay, any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Moving on, resolution number 6832, entitled resolution approving ordering the preparation of plans and specifications, form of contract, notes of hearing, and notes of letting, setting the base for public hearing, authorizing the taking of bids, and authorizing bid opening for the soccer complex improvements project.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Once again, I'd like to correct everyone's attention, make everyone's representation on this item. This resolution, which really does, for the city's renovations, soccer complex improvements, improvement, project, is that since May 6th, is the development during date for the project, and authorizing city staff to solicit bids for the project as well. We do have an engineer assessment cost for the base project of just over $726,000. You may recall during the budget process, we identified a total budget of right around $700,000 for the project. With this, if council were to approve this project or through this resolution, we'd have the bedlet bid letting for the project on April 30th. We have the construction contract with council on May 6th. If council were to authorize this project, we believe that it would be completed later than July 30th of 2026. That's final presentation on the project. It's a little different than the standard, you have to reference as far as authority for its integrity. So this is what the project, so once again, all you're authorizing the city staff to solicit bids for the project, and we're establishing May 6th as the public hearing date for the project.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So.
And Stryland, Hopkins, discussion? Seemed to have lost someone. Chief? Send out a search party.
We can vote without him, too. Yeah.
All right, so all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6833, entitled a resolution approving and authorizing execution of the 2080 agreement for financing of the Pella Indoor Recreation Center by between the city of Pella, Iowa and Pella Rec. Mike, thankful to talk about this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief in my comments for the proposed 2080 agreement we have with Pella Rec this evening. And anytime you hear the term 2080, you can substitute what really means the government language is, the contract or proposed contract this evening that we have with Pella Rec. As was referenced earlier, Mr. Zalster, today, Pella Rec has raised over $17.5 million for the Pella Recreation Center. These are some of various generous donors that do have Pella Rec on it, and are very thankful for the efforts of Pella Rec, and the individual donors that have financially supported the project today on it as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the agreement is concerned, why this is important, what we're forming is a proposed partnership with Pella Rec that is necessary to help finance the indoor recreation center. Now, as far as the agreement is concerned, really what it's based on is building the full facility. So one slight exception, which we'll be talking about with construction this evening, is what's being proposed at this time is not to proceed alternate number four, which is the alternate that had additional 160 parking spaces for the facility. So we have a layout here. What we're talking about is the four gymnasiums, additional swimming pool, recreation pool, complete facility, with the exception of additional parking space, which is total of 160, and that's alternate number four. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the terms of the agreement, one of the big terms of the department's under the agreement is post-building design. This is designed to have been traditionally proposed by the city of Pella, but we do have some further elevations for review by the audience members. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, the big item we stated, the purpose of this agreement is to help finance the Pella Indoor Recreation Center. As far as the financial allocation is concerned, we have roughly a $35.2 million budget, but this agreement obligates Pella Rec to is contributing $16,038,500 to the city of Pella for this project. The city's financial commitment is just over $19.1 million, and we did itemize the burden of that. We have city funds pledged, which has officially been the allotment that the city council has established for the indoor recreation center, $17 million. To date, we've received over $1.6 million in private pledges for this project, and we've also received a grant from the state of $1.5 million. Those total $19,103,500 on this as well. So with this, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of this resolution this evening. It is very important to note what this resolution states, that it does not become effective until the city council approves a construction contract for the indoor recreation center. So please keep that in mind when you vote on this item. But once again, when we look at this budget of $35.2 million, the city has actually contributed $17 million in city funds for this. So in order to build the facility, in fact, I would go as far as stating, any of the options that we're going to be considering tonight when we discuss the construction is, we need a financial arrangement to be able to finance the project that is what is being proposed this evening. And as Mr. Zalster stated, what Pella Rec has done is not only raise operating funds for this project, which to date totaled over $17.5 million, what they're proposing to do for the city is actually finance the amount of the outstanding pledges, which is significant. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're recommending approval of the resolution this evening. That concludes the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Got any motion for approval? Hopkins, Carl Stone, discussion? Questions, anything? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6834, entitled a resolution approving and authorizing execution of the 2080 agreement for the shared use of a recreation center by between the city of Pella, Iowa and the Pella Community School District.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. You go on to the side, and I'd like to thank the school board as well, superbended, great netting for the work on the science, and generous contribution to the Pella Indoor Recreation Center. Now, as far as the agreement is concerned, what this is geared towards is the operational aspects of the recreational center. If you recall, when Mr. Scott Tarrant presented the item this evening as far as indoor recreation facility study on this, we are a little bit short by what we were projecting as far as operating revenues and operating expenditures. Pella's school board, the operations, the set-up of operating agreement helps support operations at the indoor recreation center. Now, as far as the terms of the agreement, what's being proposed is a ten-year initial term. The school district would have priority use of the city's competition swimming pool, and in exchange, the school district would create the city of Pella $1 million for five years. And we do have the fiscal year established up here, but that's 2028 through the year 2032, 32, yeah, 32, 33, I got that right. So on it, that is a ten-year agreement, payments are in terms of five years. And this agreement is also necessary in order for the operational requirements, the operational requirements previously established by the city of Pella. If you recall, what is stated is one of the requirements for the recreational center is additional revenues need to exceed additional expenditures for the facility. By approving this agreement, we believe that these projected additional revenues will exceed projected additional expenditures for the recreation center. And we are recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Got any motion for approval? For Carl Stone, Hopkins, any discussions?
The usage, they're basically paying the rent school, right? I mean, competition pool. The competition pool. And so will they, how are we going to adjust to that? You know, I mean, there's so many, not to exceed 36 weeks, not to exceed six days per week, or two hours per day.
What I would say in administrative, in the agreement, we've had an excellent working relationship with the public community school district throughout the years on this. And from an operational standpoint, we'll have to be worked out that from the feasibility study, from going through the feasibility studies, our understanding of the school district, we have an idea when we'll be using the pool on this, and it's relatively set pattern on a daily basis. So we believe those types of logistics can be worked out with the school district on it, as far as what the school district has access to the competition swimming pool as opposed to public memberships.
Because it'll be like the basketball courts. Everybody wants to use it at the same time.
And if you recall in that agreement, the law states is that we agreed to reserve these four lanes, and the competition swimming pool is actually a eight-lane pool. And so going through the feasibility study of Pella, we understand there may be a chance to set up a policy for the school team on it, that both the school district and the public may be using the pool at the same time on it. So we've accommodated, I have to be very able to work out that initial agreement to the school district.
Anything else? Okay, we will vote. All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call and roll.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
De Young?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Okay, move to the public hearing on the matter of the adoption of plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate the cost of construction of the Pella Indoor Recreation and Recreation Center. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to grab a little bit of the board for tonight's public hearing. And what we're to talk this evening about is the recreational center bid letting, that is called a commission plus, and potentially consider construction bids this evening for the project. Now, on bidding up the project, it's very important to ensure the terms, base bid, alternate bid. What we really try to do is perfect the city in bidding this project. So a base bid means the city is committed to building at least the base bid, and the base bid, per term discussed this evening, was two, like two gyms, a competition swimming pool, and a turf field in lieu of an indoor recreational pool. And it included also a 132 parking spaces, that was included as the base bid. What we have listed up on the board is the alternate support of the facility that we have here. You don't have to worry about memorizing them, because I believe we have a few on our paper. You don't have to worry about memorizing them, because I believe we have a few on our council review as well. Now, what the alternates for is that gives the city financial flexibility in considering this project, and in the event we structure this, in the event that the bids would come in under the engineer's estimate on the project, we would have some flexibility to potentially be able to add to the alternates on the project. And that's kind of a nice segue for this. So Manny, let's go ahead to the next slide, please. Now, as far as the base bid, it's certain, keep in mind, this is all structured to protect the city financially in bidding this project. The engineer's estimate on the base bid for the project was just over twenty-eight million dollars. Two lowest responsible bidders on this project received, we believe, the highest bid was the lowest responsible bidder on the base bid. Their bid was twenty-four million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, that is significantly lower than the investment. What that has done is give the city a position where we sit at the alternative project. So let's go ahead, Manny, option number two. And I would like to state, these are not the only options the city has in this matter. These options that are being presented this evening is to facilitate discussions on the recreation center, size and scale of the facility. So when we talk about the full build or the full project, we had an engineer estimate of thirty-six million dollars or thirty-six point one million dollars. The lowest responsible bidder on the full build or the full project, the stall, that there was over thirty million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars for the project. So that's a significant savings to the city of Pellet for the full build on the project. So let's go ahead, please, Manny. Option number three is the contract of 2080 agreement that we condition through this evening with Pellet Rec. That is basically the full build of the project, so that would be four gymnasiums, two pools, indoor workout facility that we have minus alternate four, which is additional parking for the facility, that's about a hundred and sixty parking spaces. We believe the lowest responsible bidder on this portion of, or this option, the stall, the amount of twenty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So let's go ahead, please, Manny. Now, as far as the resolutions that are on the agenda this evening, we are with the resolutions we have. First resolution that we'll be considering this evening is a resolution adopting the plans, specifications, and form of contract. The second resolution that we have on the agenda this evening actually makes a report of the construction contract. Now, as far as city administration's recommendation on this project, we are recommending approving the resolution this evening, including the indoor recreation center project. And just briefly to explain our recommendations, as we really focused on the criteria that the council previously established on this from a financial standpoint. We talked about the fiscal capacity of this project, what we heard this evening was Michael Maloney at the DA Davidson, and he believes the city has fiscal capacity to fund this project. And we also talked about the viability of funding sources, particularly the local block sales service tax fund, which council has the authority to issue on that as well. The second item that was important to both the city administration and the city council when we talked about this criteria December of two thousand and four, was the ability to tie in private pledges for this project. In this case, if we looked at when the being proposed Pellet Rec, the private pledges outstanding by just over sixty million dollars. Pellet Recreation Studies stepped up and proposed to finance those pledges for the city of Pellet, it really makes it a viable project at that standpoint on it. So that checks that box. Tonight, we heard from Ballard King on the feasibility study and looking at this, and in particular, we wanted to make sure, at least it has some sort of assurance that potential additional revenues from the indoor recreation center would be in excess of the additional expenditures from the recreation center. What Ballard King has reported is that, as they are projecting, that is the base, one of the key items that we've had with that is the generous donation, the contribution by the Pellet Community School District for this project as well. So when you look at all three of those factors on it, that is the basis for city administration to proceed with this project. But I would be remiss if I did not state this decision lies with the Pellet City Council. Our recommendation is to proceed with the project, but that decision is hopefully up to the public. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if we were to proceed with this project, and this is the first time that we've really talked about the size and scale options that we have and the alternates on it. And so our recommendation from city administration is to proceed, but we have a couple of conditions. A, whatever option that we choose to proceed with, we want to make sure that we have financing sources secured to be able to fund the construction contract on this. This is where we can step with the contract that we have with Pellet Rec organization this evening. We want to make sure on this, because if you look at just the base bid of this project, twenty-four million dollars, that's in excess of the financial commitment that the city of Pellet established for this project, seventeen million. The second item that we want to make sure of, and we have Mr. Mark Allen from Shire Adderley here this evening on this, we want to make sure we verify with Shire Adderley who is the lowest responsible bidder on the option. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation on the side of the public, answering questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Written comments, Manny?
No written comments.
We've all gotten a few stuff.
No official ones.
Okay. Counsel, oral comments about the project.
Sure, the attorney, Emily W., had a question for me.
I don't believe we open the public hearing.
Okay. Parking spot, yeah, this, this, we got to be procedurally correct here. So we need a motion to open the public?
We should.
We typically do not.
Okay, let's do it, just in case.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion to open the public hearing on the matter of the adoption of plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate the cost for the construction of the Pellet Indoor Recreation and Recreation Center. Hopkins, short, Van Strylen. Hey, all those in favor, I'm sorry, Manny, please call the board.
Hopkins. Van Strylen.
Yes.
De Young.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. Now we go to comments, so.
How many have you got?
Parking spots, where the, you know, the thing about dropping the hundred and sixty spaces, how many parking spaces were there without that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, I believe the base plan has two hundred and thirty-two parking spaces, correct? And then the alternate was for the additional hundred and sixty.
I believe it's correct, yes.
So it's still on the parking lot.
Yeah, so it's a hundred and sixty. But let me kind of explain the thought process of dropping that. So obviously, we need all the parking we can get out of the sports park. We have, we have a grant application into Prag Meadows for a million dollars that I think we have a very good chance to get. And what I was thinking, we have enough money to pay for the project with our donations now. So my thought process was, let's drop parking, and if we get that, that grant, spend the whole million dollars on parking out there. Because we certainly, anybody that goes out there knows how much parking spaces. The other thing is, is, you know, that wouldn't go in for two years till the project is done, so we should be able to address parking. That was the whole purpose, but wasn't saying that we didn't, feels like my mic's dead. Probably Adderley's gone, he's been here a long time. Anyway, there wasn't the need for the parking, certainly is there. I think we could address it differently.
Dave's got a question. We spent a lot of time talking about it. Any other, we've all asked some questions, any other questions?
Well, how do we decide which, which bill to build, which one to build here?
I'd say that's up to the city council to, to, what, what would you, what do you want to do?
Well.
Which, which whole?
The one I wanted isn't on here, that's the problem. I, we asked for, we did four gyms, I would say, we probably need pools more than we need the gyms. There are seventeen gyms in town, and as one of the, here at Pellet, points was that we need to do more collaboration amongst each other to share this, share this stuff. Now, I know they're busy, I know that, I think that high schools build more gyms. But PCD is going to close their gyms when we build gyms, so we're not gaining a lot. And we've got a gym at the, at the community center that would be useful. I, I'm kind of in the camp of building what we can pay cash for without borrowing any money. And I know that strikes people strange, but in this day and age, but we have several things going on in town that need to be considered. Pellet Department, EPI, both laid off people, the school board has laid off people, the loss tax agreement with Mary and Kelly's coming up. We have a great deal of infrastructure in town that needs attention. We shouldn't be building one and a half miles of streets every year, and I think we're way under that. I know we're way under that. Again, the seventy-four percent of the loss tax, I'm not in favor of committing that much of the loss tax to the project. We've got a fire truck coming in three more years, two million dollars. I mean, we, we've got a lot of ways to spend money. I just think that we need to maybe be a little bit more cautious, build something, I'm not against building something, but I'm, I don't like the idea of tying up seventy-four percent of our money coming in. Fifty percent of it is supposed to go for infrastructure. And that's been said, that's been published, I got several publications of it. Seventy-four percent is too much. We need the recreational properties, that's fine. The other thing is, I would not build or put in exercise equipment. We have two or three places in town providing that stuff, that's less expensive, it's high maintenance. Let those guys take care of it, they're paying property taxes and they're paying income taxes. We pay no property taxes, so, and, and that stuff is, that stuff's expensive. I think there's an allocation of about nine hundred thousand dollars in the project for that. So those are the things I'm thinking about, I, I think we need to be careful. It's great to be bold, but it's great to be careful. That's what I'm thinking. Well, it's not on the list, it's the problem.
So I want to ask a couple of questions for John. So I think it's fair, you're saying you are for a rec center. We don't know what it is.
Of some nature, yeah.
Of some reason.
I think we need to build something, but I don't know if we need to build thirty-five million dollar facility off, off, right on the rocks.
You figure over the seventeen million dollars?
Because we have donations for that.
Oh, I think, do, if we, if we don't build this, do we have, do we have those donations?
No.
So, so per, per your recommendation, John, on cash, the cash would actually come from, the only way that we would get that cash is from the city, not from donations. So your, your recommendation would be to spend the amount of money that we've allocated from the city side, but not accept any of the donations?
I didn't say that. I think those people will know.
Well, they agree, but I think so otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, just okay.
Okay, well, I've said my piece, so go ahead, whatever. That's what I think, we've got, we do not do, we have not done a good job of taking care of stuff we have. We got a tennis court on Orchard that's gone out of condition, you know, half million dollars would fix it compared to thirty-five million. It's outdoors. We have people in town that are still getting sewage back up into their homes, we have a lot of old infrastructure. We've got a lot of stuff that needs fixing, but the hose power is going to come down pretty soon. Go there and touch it. It's rotten. So I mean, you know, and so when, I see this vision, what do you want Pellet to look like in, in twenty thirty-three? Well, our attraction is that we're a quaint, small Dutch town. We're not Ankeny, we're not Altuma, we're not West LA. We're, we're not, and, and in the last ten years, we've hardly had, we can't get any more people in town. We need to either expand our orders, or we need to think we're just going to be a small Dutch town, we need to really shine the place up so that people aren't coming here.
I, John, we've built like, we've built like two hundred houses in the last ten years.
I know, I know, but.
You just said we haven't got anybody in town.
Well, our population in the last ten years has gone up about a thousand people. So we're working on it, we're working on it. But do you want to turn into Ankeny?
Would that, I don't, I don't know about that discussion, do you want to turn into Ankeny or whatever. But to, I don't know if it was Michael's comment, that cities are the only entity that, that has to navigate in perpetuity. So I don't know if I want to turn into Ankeny or Milwaukee or whatever, but I do want us to have a thriving community, not just today, but in perpetuity. And the way that that happens with the, let's see, Dan Zalster said, we're making a generational investment. This is, this is not about a decision about a few dollars here or some big dollars there. This is a decision about generations. And we're, we're not making a decision about a rec center, we're making a decision about the direction of our community. And are we, are we choosing, are we choosing to be afraid and, and hunker down and assume the worst?
Or? Don't use that word afraid with me.
Okay, I'm just asking, I'm asking a question, I'm not saying that you aren't.
Well.
I'm saying, are we choosing to be afraid? Or are we choosing to make decisions that actually create the future? So we could, we could hunker down and we could let the future happen to us. The future is whatever the future is. Or we can invest in our community, we can create the future. Those are our two options. I'm for creating the future.
Well, we gotta, we gotta keep the community functional.
This, this is the best way to keep the community.
Well, no, it's not. We, we gotta have drains, we gotta have water, we gotta have fires, where's the fire truck coming? That's functional, those are core needs. This is a want, this is a big want, I want a big, I want this big thing.
It's, it's much more than a want.
Well.
It's a need for the community. I mean, we've heard all of the discussions on it. And I would say when it comes to infrastructure, you know, Danny's retired right now. I think it's a little bit offensive to act like we don't take care of infrastructure. Our, our public works department does a really good job of analyzing the infrastructure we need, having a systematic plan to fix it, to do. And we, and, and Mike works with them so that we have the funding. I, personally, I'd be all for getting another bond and fixing whatever you think needs to be fixed. Because as the discussion happened, financing, for the city to finance some of these things with debt, I think is very physically responsible. Because we could borrow money, is Mike still here?
Here.
What, what kind of interest rate are we talking about?
Can I rewind ten days?
I mean, I'll be, it's much.
It's small at four percent.
Yeah, four percent or maybe less. When inflation rate is two point eight percent, and we can, we can borrow money at twelve percent, I think that's the hardest part to do. So I'd be in full support of whatever infrastructure issues you're talking about. I'm pretty sure we could use our road use tax money and get a bunch of stuff done now. While, while we're in this favorable, you and I are quite a bit older, we understand the interest rate environment way different than it is right now. And so, but I, I think our, our, our public works department does a really good job of identifying the needs and helping, and making sure we have a systematic plan. We spend three, four million dollars a year on, on streets and infrastructures, and I, we will continue to do that.
I, I'm not implying that the streets are, they do a great job, and they do the job. And, and I'm not in on the conversations of, of when Danny said we need to do this or do that, and we couldn't do this or that. So I'm not in on any of those discussions. So, so all I see is what comes across the table here for us to approve and move forward on. And I'm just saying, it needs to be more. And I'm just saying, it needs to be more. More needs to come across this table so we can approve it. It's not his fault. If we don't approve it, he's not going to do it. So.
So for tonight's purposes, with all these people who show up, and all their faces and share their opinions. How many yeses do you want to move forward tonight?
You need four.
What is your answer?
Four.
Mine's yes. I don't think I need to add anything additional to, uh, what kind of fast of a presentation from our community has said. We've heard, um, the counter arguments, uh, I appreciate those as well. I did, uh, this decision is actually a generational end term is really important. I think if the noes have it in this decision, our future will be. And I think that's a very impressive, uh, um, item that to hang on to. And then I think it's far too costly for all of us sitting here and all of us outside for any of us to say no to this. One of my other comments would be, we're not all here tonight. And I think this is a large enough a decision, pitiful nothing, of course. Kind of curious as to how, uh, I've appreciated all six of us made our votes no. I don't know how the logistics of that works out. I still don't know your answer. If you're willing to say your answer, then maybe we could move forward tonight. But I don't want to, I don't cheapen anything in this substantial decision. By not having all six of us stand on our yeses or our noes. Not only for now, not only for reelection, but for ten or thirty years from now. I think this, this is momentous enough. It's not for my lifespan and probably not for my kids' lives. Even if I picked the four favorite, I'd say for ten, the rest are not. This is absolutely difficult. It's why I ran for the seat. Because our future is far more important than our now and honestly, our past. I love this community too much to not have this be representative of all four words and all two of our wishes.
I've got a question. I haven't heard from Harold a lot. Is, is there, he expressed some, uh, concern about pool. I think maybe, maybe yours and John's opinions are different about between the gyms being more important, maybe more important, is that, that guy?
Well, I'll tell you this. I've got, um, many, many people to say, we need four gyms. That's probably the biggest, you know, what we need in a rec center and the walking track. We have a lot of very successful cross-country people and track people in this community. I can think of one person that said, I got kicked out of Central College. They would not be around over there, so my dad took me over to Brunel and I, and I ran in Brunel the train.
Sure.
And I know also, probably get nailed on this one, but, uh, uh, we have some Central College people that say, oh, we want to participate in, uh, we want to have a swimming team. I don't know if we received a substantial contribution from them. But, um, I have just had a huge number of people tell me, you built that thing with two gyms. We're not going to get any tournaments here. We need, we need four gyms.
You're supportive of four gyms.
We need four gyms, we need a walking track, or we're not going to get any, any tournaments in this town. So these people are still going to go to Minneapolis, they're still going to go to Kansas City or Iowa City or somewhere else. I mean, uh, the, um, well, and for the swimmers too. They're still going to be traveling to a lot of places for swimming. I mean, we'll get some here and they can obviously practice here.
Practice, yeah, for sure.
You know, but, um, but yeah, I, I cannot tell you how many emails and how many times I've been stopped and told, um, we need gyms, we need gyms.
Is there, is there a version of, between all the bid packages and options, at least as far as we can kind of tell, is there a version that you would be in favor? My, my mic's dead. Is, is there a version that you're in favor of? If, if we're looking at different options, is there a version of the rec center options that you would be in favor of?
Was the full build, uh, were, were we showing twenty-nine thousand? But you got twenty-two million?
Twenty million.
The full, the full build, the full build is thirty-five billion when you add the construction cost and the, and the soft costs.
So that really wasn't in the, um.
Yeah, the full build was, uh, yeah, there is, that's the construction.
That's the, that's the construction cost, yeah.
That's actual construction and then you got your architect fees and equipment and everything else. There's a million dollar contingency in this numbers too.
But the full build was not in the total package?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's there right there.
No, but I mean, uh, and.
Four gyms, two gyms.
Four gyms, two, that was in our total. That's one of our options.
So we want to be honest.
To take that bid. And so everything.
But the turf field.
Yeah, the turf field is gone, but there's, yeah, the rec pools.
Which didn't, might, uh, might be a few soccer people that aren't too crazy about that.
We just put it on the, the soccer fields, right?
But that is not, that's not nearly as important to most of the people in this community as the, as the two pools and the, uh, the four gyms.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I agree, I'm sure.
Yeah. So just let, I'm not here to argue with anybody. Let me, I've said a lot about this, we've talked a lot about this, I've obviously spent a lot of time on this project. And I've always said, we won't build more than we can afford. We can afford the full bill, but because, back in April twenty-twenty-two, when we voted to introduce this long-term, so, uh, that was possible, and as I said, we voted six to none, so we voted that part. At that time, it was a forty-five million dollar plan that included a rec center, renovation of the community center, and the road. That was, that's what the council voted to move forward with. At this point in time, that's the only, that's the only facility plan we, is on tape to do those three things. And I, I said, as far as the rec center's concerned, in, in, in April, when we voted to move forward, we had twelve million dollars committed from Pellet here at PPI. On forty-five million dollar project, the city committed, was ready, willing to commit five point five million. So the city's contribution to that total plan was twenty-two five, and the rest was going to be fundraised. Or we tried several other different ways to raise the money. But as we sit here today, uh, on the rec center part, we have our number. We have a bid that's good till April twenty-five. So that's, you know, I, I agree, I would love to have all six council members weigh in and vote. We don't have the luxury of time in this case because the bids are, there's a timeline to the bid. I believe it's April, uh, April twenty-five. If we don't act by April twenty-five, then potentially you could have to rebid the project. So anyway, my point is, uh, we, we, the community, I say we, because it's the community has stepped up with pledged commitments of almost eighteen million dollars for this project. So you add the eighteen and you add the seventeen, that's thirty-five million. We can pay for the full, we can pay for that full project under the financing plan that we have in place. We've talked about it a lot tonight. We know we can afford it. It makes sense. The pledges, if we decide to do less of a project, I have sold this project and I've been involved personally in almost every pledge or donation that has come in, not a hundred percent, almost every single one of them. And I don't know if you've ever done fundraising on a project like this. The donors expect that the city will have some skin. And so if we want to make it, if we do a twenty-five, let's say we decide to do a twenty-five million dollar project. And all of that ten million is coming from, that's coming from the donors. Cause they're not getting what they pledged to make. And so whether we do a twenty-five million or a thirty-five million dollar project, to get the project done, seventeen million from the city has got to be.
City spending the same amount.
So I'm just saying, we can afford the full project, then we have everything we think we want. We've got four gyms, we've got two, we've got a competition pool, an electrication pool. That's going to make everybody sit in this room happy about what's available for a facility. So I'm just saying, uh, why not? Why not? So that's, that's, and I obviously, I don't vote, so I, I, and I find out every day how little power a mayor actually has. Or more government. You guys, the only way you can go for it is more of you to say yes. And I, Mike, Mike talked about December, but last July too, we had a city council meeting after we had not chosen to move forward with bids. We had a really good discussion about it and that, and I have a really good memory. So we had this discussion, I said, what, what do you guys that were talking about not supporting and what we need? There were three things I was told that you needed as a group. One was, uh, obviously to pay for it. One was to, it had to operate without creating a big, more stress on the state budget. And we would have to have the pledges financed so that we guarantee to get it. I started here, I said, Mark Young, what do you say? Yes. I said, Lynn was not here that night either unfortunately. I said, Dave Robkins, what do you say? You said yes. I said, Harold, what do you say? You said yes. I said, Spencer, what do you say? You said yes. I said, John, what do you say? You said yes. So I, you know, you guys can change minds. I, I don't have an issue with that. But I went from that July meeting under the assumption that if I, if we were as a community able to fulfill those three requests, that it would move forward. Otherwise, we'd start at something else. When I'm sitting here asking you, uh, if we do, if we do this, in the back of my mind, I'm going, well, I know I can do that. I know I can do that. I, so I knew that night, we needed another three, four million dollars. I knew we could do it. We, I knew the operations, we could make those work. And so, but if you guys had said no that night, then we'd went a different direction. And they have cut down the size or whatever. But you guys said yes, so I kept working on this project based on your yeses. And, yeah, that's, and the community responded to that in a big way. To the point where we sit here tonight after getting great bids, great support, with the ability to make this project happen. I think that's pretty incredible for this community and I think for the long term, this is an incredibly important decision. Because I've, I've had conversations with leadership of our bigger companies. And if we, if I have to go back to those companies and say, thanks for the six million dollar offer, but no thanks. We're not going to do this project. I fear for that. I fear for that conversation. Take Pellet Corp, they're just celebrating a hundred years in this community. And if you go back and look at the history, Pete Kuiper launched a small manufacturing company on the east side of the water. And shortly after that, he moved to Pellet, moved into Pellet. Do you know what building he went into? He went into a building the city of Pellet bought for him to move that. It's a hundred years ago. And in one hundred years, the community and that company has been. He in fact named his company Pellet after the town. So that's how tight the relationship has been in a hundred years. And if we don't do this project, uh, that relationship, you can argue with me, don't believe me, whatever. That relationship will be done. I know that. And, you know, that's why I think it's just so critical. And they do so much for this community that you don't even know about. I was at an event last night, Harry Smith and Lisa Bluder were at Central College. We gotta get longer lasting matters.
Don't blame the wire actually worse.
Or, or not have such a long meeting. But anyway, I was at an event, I got invited to an event last night. Lisa, uh, Harry Smith, uh, nationally known journalist, and Lisa Bluder, thanks to Kate, Kate and Clark, nationally known basketball coach. Harry Smith interviewed, guess how that happened? Pellet Corporation paid for it, because you don't get Lisa Bluder here for free, I can promise you that. So Pellet Corporation did that. The Duster Auditorium was packed with people. And it was an incredible experience. They do that stuff on a regular, regular basis, so I fear for, uh, severing or damaging, not severing, I don't want to be that dramatic. But damaging those relationships that we have, because Pellet is what it is, a lot because of who they are. We have two homegrown companies here. I knew Pete Kuiper and I knew Gary Vermeer personally. And, uh, they, they loved Pellet and they continued to be part of Pellet when they did. They certainly don't have to be, but they're, they're committed to this community. And so I don't want to, uh, fear or damage those relationships. And I think, I think this is an important enough decision that it would affect that. One, one challenge I see is that. Very hard to predict that it will not run with a deficit. We can draw all the numbers we want. So I guess, um, there's some compelling arguments. I wish Pellet would stop talking about moving out. But.
They're just, they're just faced with reality.
Well, I, I know, but see, they're gonna, I, they're gonna do what's best.
And they're not threatening, they're not threatening.
Well, they, they talk about it every time.
Listen, I, I actually just, I had a meeting with Adam Farber last week.
All right. Adam didn't call me, so I guess that's.
Lynn, Lynn had a meeting with him too. And she can corroborate what I said. He absolutely did not threaten moving out.
Okay, well.
But he absolutely did say, this, this type of facility, this type of amenity is absolutely critical to our community and to our businesses. And, um, I, I just wonder if a city council in Pellet has ever gone against the express wishes of the three schools and three major corporations. I wonder if we've ever voted against that. And to Eric Van Clay's comment, he said, a no vote is a black eye on the city of Pellet. We could probably call a hundred mayors and a hundred city councils in, in Iowa. And they would all be like, why is this, why is this something that you have to debate for so long? Get it done.
We'll have to be careful.
I understand, I understand.
We, we need the balance.
We need, we need the balance.
I think, I...
Well, I, I have people calling me and telling me to vote no. So, you know, it is tough. I've kind of been on the no side for a long time, I think you know that. And I still am upset about the seventy-four percent of the lost tax getting consumed. And we need so many things to be done. So I'm going to be real interested in getting other things done. Streetwise, infrastructure wise.
Well, John, you and I are, I think I pointed that out earlier, we think differently. Yeah, that's okay, that makes good... But let's commit, let's commit, because I'm serious. If you, let's commit to figuring out a way to get more infrastructure done than we, if we want to accelerate that. Because I honestly believe we can do that. In the environment, in today's environment, with interest rates and everything else, we can do that. We can afford it. As Mike Maloney said, our, we are, we don't have debt. It's basically zero. We've got sixty-nine million dollars of debt capacity. The environment for debt right now, some people look at debt as a four-letter word. Well-managed debt is a great asset. It's a tool and to use properly. We get a lot of stuff. So I, I agree with you.
I think we should, I think we should vote.
Okay, we, I want to make sure the council has a little opportunity. We also, this is a public, this is a public hearing, so we also have to have time for any public... Are you guys done? Have you said anything?
Let's go.
Mark, Mark keeps it short.
He's the senior state.
Okay. So any member of the audience want to comment? If you do, no, we can't.
Please vote yes.
Look at both sides.
Let's, let's, let's do this properly. If you want to speak, please come speak. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Okay.
If you want to speak, will you come back here this night?
And can you go back there this night?
This one, they're going to steal that one.
I have sat here tonight, and I'm looking around. How many of you people were really at the budget meetings in March? There were a few. What isn't being said tonight is exactly what John's saying. We have problems here in town, infrastructure problems. We have people who still have raw sewage with heavy rains, and we're not addressing those things. This is what needs to come first. And I'm just sitting here with a mayor's message from Indianola, Iowa. One point eight million shortfall in their budget. One point eight. They can't get their wellness center under control. And also, they only got a hundred and thirty-four thousand more in with property tax. We don't want to be this. And our TIPS are not paying into the city for ten to fifteen years. So people in Prairie Ridge One, Prairie Ridge Two, Timber View, there's more, Boss Ridge, they're not paying taxes into the city. It's going back to the developers. So those of us who are not in those TIPS districts, we're paying for everything. And I think we need to be aware of that. This isn't a real simple fix, people, but we need to have a survey of the community. It needs to become a community effort. Thank you.
Eric Sektor, 164 Delph Drive, but I'm spearheading Pella as well. You recall the first question that we asked in our survey? What's your vision for Pella in 2033? Through the gloriousness of AI, I inputted all of those inputs, and I have a beautiful sort of model that people who live here, the three hundred and thirty who participated, said, "We, the residents of Pella, envision a future woven with the threads of our cherished past and the vibrant hues of a welcoming tomorrow. We aspire to a community where the unique charm and quaint spirit that define us continue to flourish, embraced by a spirit of togetherness that knows no bounds. That our historic heart beats stronger not just for visitors, but is the vibrant core of our daily lives. We dream of a Pella where our Dutch heritage is not a relic, but a living story, expressed in our architecture and traditions, yet open and adaptable to the currents of modern life. We see a town that treasures its history while boldly stepping into the future. A place where growth enhances, rather than erodes, the qualities we hold dear. We dream of a Pella that hungs with activity for all ages. A place where families thrive and where our youth find ample opportunities for engagement and belonging. We envision enhanced amenities, from vibrant cultural spaces and recreational facilities to accessible green spaces, creating a tapestry of experiences that enrich the lives of all our residents. Our hope is for a Pella that continues to be a safe and family-oriented haven, where strong community bonds are nurtured and where a spirit of collaboration propels us forward. We see a future where our local businesses flourish, supported by a community that understands their vital role in our identity and economy. Together, we envision a Pella that proudly honors its past, wholeheartedly embraces the present, and boldly steps into a future where charm, inclusivity, and opportunity intertwine to create an even more exceptional place to call home." So we've done the survey, and that's what Pella residents want.
I need a Fisher 1546 Pleasant Drive. So I've heard this survey mentioned twice now and earlier. Never before have I seen the opportunity to fill out a survey. So I'm wondering, who in Pella knew about this survey? Of the thousands of people, of the thousands of people who knew about this survey? Nobody I talked to. Well, then it's really too bad, it's really too bad that only three hundred filled it out. If everybody here, then they got it. It's not, it's not overwhelming, folks. It's really not convincing, I'm sorry. Now, I'm one of the people that are on John's side. I'm Dutch through and through. And we take care of what we have before we go any further, okay? I'm not against direct center, and I've mentioned this several times. But we need to take care of what we have. I was on, I was walking through the Monde Gras. Tripped over some of the cement in there, because it's uneven. What's going to happen when we have tulip time? There's another person that had this happen to them. Yeah, I didn't sue, I got hurt. A friend of mine, she got hurt, she didn't sue. But what's going to happen to other folks that come along and trip on it? Because it's going to happen. Just consider it, okay, guys? We need to take care of what we have. And now is not the time to be spending this kind of money. Way I feel, thank you.
Anyone else?
I think one of the... I'm sorry, Mike Bukite, live in Pella Estates, number twenty-two. I just, you know, I think what's important, anytime communities come together to make decisions, is that you have really good dialogue. And you have good input from all sides. And I think the city of Pella and all of you that sit at our leadership table have truly done a nice job of listening. And I, you know, I think it's hard to get everybody to agree. There's plenty of perspectives. You know, I, I, many others in this community get to interact, a lot of people, a lot of people. And it's easy to listen and to hear the perspectives. I am in full support of this rec center. There, there is, I have no doubt, for all the youth that I've coached for the last thirty years, and all the elderly people that I help in this community move into housing from a mental health standpoint, from a physical health standpoint, from a need standpoint. There is so much need. And, and there's so much that was shared tonight that's just spot on. I, I've tried to keep an open, objective opinion about this. My conviction for this is even stronger than ever after what I've witnessed tonight. This is an amazing community. I have no doubt that we can support a rec center, and it'll be successful. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins DeYoung, any discussion? May all in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Van Strayland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to resolution number six eight three five, entitled Resolution Adopting Plan Specifications to Term Contract, an Estiment of Cost for the Pella Indoor Recreation and Aquatic Center. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, now you motion for approval, so move. Hopkins DeYoung, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Yes!
Van Strayland?
Sorry to put that out first. Truly, though, I do appreciate the counsel. That was a bold, tough decision, but you made your way down. Okay, moving on to resolution number six eight three six, entitled Resolution Making Award of Construction Contract for the Pella Indoor Recreation and Aquatic Center. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And likewise, having microphone issues, I'll try to talk loud. What this resolution would do would actually award the construction contract for the project. So this is the portion of the meeting where we're going to have to identify the option chosen for the project on here, page three. We talked about the base project, and we also talked about the full build. And we also talked about the proposal from Pella Rec this evening, which is the full build for the project minus alternate number four, which is additional parking spaces. So we'd be looking for options for that. Before identifying the option, we'd also have to verify, O'Shea Hattery, who is the lowest responsible bidder from the options selected by council. And is there any, is there anything additional to add?
I don't believe so. There obviously needs four votes to pass and award the contract. You need to choose a bid that you're going to award, and then I believe Shai will let you know which, who is the responsive, responsible bidder, lowest responsive, responsible bidder at that option.
Do we have to make the bid decision based on the lowest dollar amount? Or to make another criteria like local contractor or...
It has to be the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and I believe Shai has identified who that is based on the bid that you choose. So the answer to your question is no, you can't do a local option.
Okay, so for the full bid, so we need a motion that specifies that we're going for the full bid. And then, once the full build, once we do that, then Shai will say who that bidder is in the process.
That is the process on the option. Once again, the difference between option two, and I believe, Mandy, if you showed option three, is the parking lot. Our contract that was conditionally approved at Pella Rec this evening was on option three on that. So what we'd be looking for is a consensus on the option chosen by council. Then we'll ask Shai who the lowest responsible bidder was for that option.
So what's the terminology of the motion? Just a motion for the approval? Construction contract.
In which bid?
Yeah, in which bid. And what you're listing as the full, the full bid that has the parking lot in it?
No, the option... The, the full bid has the parking lot in, in, in it.
Option three is... Which, which is the one we're waiting on, so we, we don't even want the full, the full build yet. We want, if we're going to do it, this has everything except for the parking lot.
Yes, correct.
So I need a motion... I'll move for option three. For Hopkins DeYoung, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Van Strayland?
So we, we don't need to talk about the contractors at this point?
I think the lowest responsible bidder, and let me verify, is option three, which is everything but alternate fourth stall, correct?
All right. Still have a public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, but Mike? Oh, we need to award the contract.
Six eight...
Six eight three six, we did vote on that.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
We, we, we voted to award.
Yep.
Okay, so public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a very brief presentation on this. This is the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six for the city of Pella. This would be the fiscal year that would start on July first of this year and extend through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. As far as the budget is concerned, it is also important to note that it includes the associated five-year capital improvement program as well. These are the same budgets being presented this evening, with the same budget that we discussed during our budget work sessions in late March of this year. So with this, the budget for two thousand twenty-six has a proposed revenue source of, Shai, eighty million dollars. And it also has a proposed expenditures, it is over seventy-five million. So we have a budgetary surplus of this around four point eight million dollars. The lion's share of that surplus is attributed to unused bond proceeds that we forecast with the capital improvement program. As we discussed during the budget process, the city's budget is made up of several little ripples that consolidate when you roll everything up. But this is the overall budget for the city of Pella, so let's go with it, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the highlights are concerned, what's being proposed is the city would maintain its property tax rate at ten dollars and seventy-five cents for a thousand dollars in taxable valuation. As council is aware, for those in the audience seeing this for the first time, the city of Pella has one of the lowest property tax rates in the state of Iowa. We're also proposing an increase in water and wastewater fees on this, and this is maintain adequate capital improvement program for both utilities, around five percent. In addition, for our employees, we're proposing total employee compensation of an increase of four and a half percent. I would also like to mention with the proposed budget, no new positions are proposed to be added with this budget. And finally, Mr. Mayor, if council were to approve this budget, as we discussed in the pleasure session for the typical households in Pella, it's about a ninety-seven dollar increase that we believe, and that's because of the main nature of the increase in water and wastewater fees. So with that, we are recommending approval this evening, and we have to answer the questions the council may have on the side of them.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments?
No written comments.
Okay. Council comments? Any member of the audience comment? All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. So who supports? Van Strayland, Hopkins, any discussion? May all in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Van Strayland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six eight three seven, entitled Resolution Adopting Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, Annual Budget, Private Capital Improvement Plan. Anything to add, Mike?
No, sir.
I get a motion for approval. Hopkins, Carl Stone, any discussion? May all in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Van Strayland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Get a motion for approval of the abstract of bills, number twenty-one seventy-three. Get a motion for approval of the abstract of bills number 2173. Hopkins, Vian Strylan, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Vian Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carl Stone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any other business, counsel?
Congratulations, the Jazz won. One state jazz championship again, as dominant as any of our Pellet football programs have been.
Five straight. Five straight.
Councilman Hopkins and myself have members who are proud dads, but just proud of our music program, proud of our students, a great community to live in here.
Okay, anything else? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to address us with? If so, I guess we're going to that mic back there. Step to microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, uh, policy and planning, I think we just, Mike has it. We need it or?
I think that these are just the items that we have upcoming for our system, maybe one or two meetings. So if council has any additional questions on these items, we'd be happy to address them. And with that concludes the staff's presentation.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Support. Hopkins, Carl Stone, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins? Carl Stone?
Yes.
Vian Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are.